Wait.
We are ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome you to the regular session of the Milwaukee Planning Commission. Agendas and additional copies of the staff reports are available on the city website at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. The easiest way to locate them is to navigate to the community calendar where tonight's meeting page is posted. If you've not reviewed the agenda, please do so. It contains important information about the process that we will follow tonight. If you wish to provide public comment, please log into the Zoom meeting or call into the meeting. Instructions for logging in or calling in are located on the meeting page of the city's website. In order to be included in the meeting record, public comments must be received during the applicable portion of the meeting. That is, general comments must be made during the open audience participation portion of the meeting, and comments on specific public hearings or work session items must be made before the close of the public testimony portion of the agenda items. Our first item tonight is the approval of the minutes from the October 27, 2020 meeting. Does anyone have any corrections that they would offer to make? Okay, I don't hear any. I have a couple of corrections that I would, I would offer in that if you look at both the 2.1 and 2.2, they're bolded actually during the meeting report. It says Commissioner Hammer approved the minutes as amended and Commissioner Edge seconded the motion. I think that that needs a little bit of clarification to say Commissioner Hammer motioned to approve the minutes and that motion was seconded by Commissioner Edge and was subsequently approved by the commission. We like Commissioner Hammer, but he can't approve the minutes on his own. Any objections to those two corrections to 2.1 and 2.2? And we may have been doing that for a while, but I just thought we would correct that going forward. Any other comments about the minutes of 27? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the, the meeting minutes as amended.
I move that we-
So I can quickly count. Okay?
Wait, we already get a motion?
I'm sorry. I thought, did we not get an emotion? I jumped the gun, sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended from October 27, 2020.
Yeah, you'll have to slow me down, Commissioner Edge. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I see hands from all the commissioners. I do, thank you. Okay, sorry about that. We have a lot to get through. I guess I'm anxious. Are there any informational items from the staff? Does not look like there's any informational items from the staff at this point. We're going to talk about audience participation at this point. This is an opportunity to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to comment on an item that is on the agenda, there will be time for comments after the staff presentation. So does anyone wish to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? If you, if you do, please raise, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to indicate you wish to make a comment. We'll check with the audience members who have called in by Zoom, meeting by phone. Before you testify, please remember to state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone in the audience who's checked in to testify at this point?
Mr. Chairman, there is no indication that anyone wishes to testify at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. We will now move on to tonight's public hearing. We will follow the basic format listed on the second page of the agenda, including the staff report, presentation, testimony, and planning commission deliberation. This concerns the Waverly Woods Plan Development. The public hearing on PD-2020-001 is called to order. The purpose of this continued hearing is to consider a proposal for a family, multi-family development consisting of four residential buildings, a community center with swimming pool, and a community room built over three phases totaling 100 dwelling units. The proposed development is being submitted as a plan development application to provide more flexibility related to development standards such as a building height and the Willamette Greenway Zone. A plan development includes a zoning amendment to add the plan development designation to the subject property zoning designation. The purpose of this application is to request approval of a plan development and Willamette Greenway conditional use application on property located at 10415 Southeast Waverly Court. The applicant has the burden of approving that the application is consistent with the City of Milwaukee zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, any applicable municipal code provision, and the proposed, proposal conforms with all of the city's applicable criteria. During the conduct of the hearing, we'll recognize those persons submitting testimony, and we would again ask that you please state your name and address for the record so they may be entered into the minutes. If you are here to testify, please remember to confine your remarks to the application and relevant criteria and avoid reputation and information not relevant. So for tonight's deliberations, we had a full agenda on this topic at a previous meeting where we heard over hours' worth of testimony from the applicant and from community members. So we're certainly willing to entertain other testimony. I would just ask that they remember to focus in on the new information that is submitted, has been submitted for this hearing, and that they stick to the, to the, the items that are part of the approval criteria. So individuals who testify, we're going to give you three minutes to testify, and the applicant, I'm going to limit to 15 minutes of total testimony during their initial presentation, and they'll have a chance to rebut any other testimony later in the meeting. So the planning commission will make a recommendation to the council regarding whether the proposed, the proposal conforms with all the city's applicable criteria, and I would now ask the staff to cite the zoning ordinance section or sections where the criteria can be found.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicable provisions of the municipal code are Title 12, Street Sidewalks in Public Places, Section 19.1007 Type 4 Review, Section 19.311 Plan Development Zone, Section 19.302 Medium and High Density Residential Zones, Title 17 Land Division, Section 19.401 Willamette Greenway Zone, Chapter 19.500 Supplementary Development Regulations, Chapter 19.600 Off-Street Parking and Loading, Chapter 19.700 Public Facility Improvements, Section 19.902 Amendments to Maps and Ordinances, and Section 19.905 Conditional Uses.
Thank you for that information. At this point, I will need to query the commissioners about potential conflicts of interest. So to any member of the planning commission who wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest, please give me a yes or a no. No?
No.
I have no affirmative responses. Does any member of the planning commission wish to abstain? No?
No.
No.
Okay, I don't have any positive responses. Does any member of the planning commission wish to report on any ex parte contact? No?
No.
Okay. I have negative responses from all the commissioners. Will any commissioner who has visited the site prior to the hearing please raise their hand? Okay. I have four hands raised from myself, Commissioner Hammer, Commissioner Edge, and Commissioner Sherman. Thank you. Did any of those commissioners who visited the site speak to anyone at the site or note anything different from what is indicated in the staff report for this application? No?
No.
No, the four who visited the site are indicating that they did not speak to anyone at the site. Does any member of the, of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the planning commission? I'll ask the staff to see if we have any indication that there's objection from the community. Okay, so let's proceed to the staff report presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. And I hope everyone is seeing the PowerPoint presentation. Great. Okay. Again, thank you very much. This is Vera Colley, Senior Planner and Planner handling this land use application. Good evening. This is a continued public hearing from October 27, and will focus mostly on new and clarified information after a brief project overview for folks that might be watching this hearing and are not familiar with the, with the site or with the project. The subject property is outlined here in Aqua, I guess. It's located at 10415 Southeast Waverly Court, surrounded by residential development on three sides, both single unit and multi-unit development, as well as Waverly Country Club to the west. A portion of the subject property contains Dunbar Woods. You can see a property line that's sort of bisecting the Dunbar Woods project. The remainder of the site is undeveloped. Access to the development is proposed from Waverly Court off Lava Drive, and given its proximity to the Willamette River, a portion of the site is in the Willamette Greenway Overlay Zone. The site is located in the historic Milwaukee neighborhood. These two images show the zoning of the site. The site is zoned residential R2, which is a high-density residential zone. It's adjacent to residential R10 zones to the north and sort of to the northwest. As noted earlier, a portion of the site is in the Willamette Greenway Zone. That's the green hatched area on the image on your right and on the left. Although it's oriented slightly differently, this is an image that shows where the Willamette Greenway Zone is related, actually related to the site development itself. So everything sort of beneath that green line is in the Willamette Greenway Zone. Approximately 70% of the project's site is within the Willamette Greenway Zone. So the proposal itself is for an apartment community that will be built in three phases. It's on approximately 6.77 acres of land. Its 100 units is developed, and again, access to the development will be exclusively from Waverly Court. The application itself is a, is subject to a Type 4 review, again, which requires the planning commission to consider whether the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the code sections that we reviewed earlier and make a recommendation to the city council for a final decision. Okay. So indicated the project is intended to be phased in three phases. You can see on this image, Phase 1 would be Building A1. Phase 2 is Building A2, and then Phase 3 is Buildings B1, B2, and then the Community Center. The, again, the Building A1 is 32 units, be built along the ridge. Building A2 is 32 units as well, as long, including the associated community buildings, so that's Phase 2. And then the two garden buildings, B1 and B2, for a total of 36 units, and the Community Center would be developed as part of Phase 3. The applicant is seeking land use approval to develop this 100-unit apartment community through a planned development process. The planned development process allows for adjustments to lot sizes, lot dimensions, and some development standards, including building height, as well as a potential increase in density up to 20% above the maximum that would normally be allowed. So these are the various land use applications that this property or the project is subject to. Questions have been raised about the processing of the application itself through the planned development process, specifically about the preliminary and the final planned development process that's described in the code in Section 311. The staff report details the planned development review process and explains how the process has been applied to this application. It's been applied as a concurrent review of all required applications. In the interest of moving the proposal through the review process without any unnecessary delay, but without reducing the opportunities for public participation and input, the application has been processed and reviewed as concurrent applications. So it's been reviewed as a consideration of the preliminary development plan and the proposed zone change, including any related land division, transportation facilities review, et cetera, within one Type 4 process. If the planning commission decides that the preliminary plans submitted can be recommended for approval, then this initial hearing review process would suffice as the recommendation hearing required by that Type 4 review process, and the commission can make a formal recommendation to the city council on what would be, what would become considered as the final development plan. Various questions were asked during the public hearing and then in subsequent written testimony regarding specific aspects of the project, and responses were provided by the applicant. Details of these, of these various clarifications are within the staff report that was posted last week to the planning commission. So regarding the project phasing, the general, project's general contractor estimates each phase would take approximately one year to complete, resulting in three years of total construction for all three phases over the permitted seven-year timeframe per the code. The requirement in the code is that Phase 1 is required to occur within one year of final development approval. Building A1 is, according to the applicant's materials, currently on schedule for midsummer 2021 construction start, with site utility work scheduled for the late spring of 2021. And then Phase 2, construction would commence after Phase 1 construction is complete, but that is subject to change depending on market conditions. The applicant confirmed in written testimony, as well as on a revised site plan that was included within the packet materials, that key amenities in the proposal, including the tuck under parking, preserved open space and vegetated areas, large community garden, and a viewing area and forested path accessible from the public right-of-way, would be available upon completion and occupancy of Phase 1, which is Building A1. That was a question that was raised about what amenities would be available through Phase 1 construction, and so that was detailed within the applicant's materials. Questions were also raised about construction access. Construction access will be from Waverly Court only. There were some questions about whether Lava Drive was going to be used as an access point for the project. It is not, according to the applicant's materials. There was also questions and concerns raised about the distance to adjacent properties from the project, as well as open space. And these two images talk about both the distance to adjacent properties, as well as the total amount of open space on the site. So the image on the right, the applicant submitted some revised site plans showing Building A2, which is in the lower sort of left of the development, of the development itself, has been moved an additional six feet away from the adjacent property line to add to the existing setback that was proposed. So the total setback for that building is now 49 feet. The site plan that was presented and was included in the, in the, with the staff report, shows, also provides the total distance between Buildings A2, B2, and B1 for them, from the four closest residences in the neighborhood, and those distances are 218 feet, 200 feet, 143 feet, and 82 feet, respectively. So that draw, that image shows the distance between the proposed buildings and some exist, and the existing residences that are the closest to those, to the proposed site. The revised site plan also shows that Building A2 is 99 feet from the Waverly Country Club property line. The applicant submitted revised site plan identifying the preserved forest buffer area. So overall, approximately 54% of the site would be, would remain in vegetation, but the actual preserved open space buffer area is approximately, is 40% of the site. And the, it represents what I would call, or I would describe sort of a green collar around, around the development, developed portion of the property. The applicant has stated the intent to preserve the site's open space, and Section 311 requires that this area remain in open space. The applicant has not proposed a conservation restriction or a conservation easement as such for this open space, for that buffer area. Staff has included in your packet materials a recommend or a draft condition of approval for such an easement. It's draft language that just reflects the language out of the code should the planning commission during its deliberations at the next hearing choose to require permanent protection and maintenance of that open space area. Final language of that condition would be pending further, further discussion, but I wanted to just highlight that, that that was included in your, in your materials. Okay. So the key issues, a couple of these are the same as the last time, but we do have a new key issue. So Steph has identified these key issues for your consideration. First, does the proposed project comply with the applicable comprehensive plan? Does the design adequately address the approval criteria for review of a development in the Willamette Greenway? And does the project provide enough exceptional advantages to warrant the additional density and building height as permitted by the Plan Development Code in Section 311? Comments were raised during the public hearing and in written testimony regarding the applicability of the 2020 comprehensive plan on the, on the proposal. Based on the application filing date, it was correctly pointed out that the prior comprehensive plan, which was adopted in 1989, should be applied to the application. So the applicant submitted revised materials, and then the staff report also reflects revised information about the 1989 comprehensive plan elements that would be applicable to this project. And so that was all included in the staff report and in the materials, as well as in the detailed findings in Attachment 1. Several sections of the comprehensive plan apply the proposal, but some of the key elements that I would just highlight here as part of this presentation include the open spaces, scenic areas, and natural resources element that talks about conserving open space and protecting and enhancing natural and scenic resources in order to create an aesthetically pleasing urban environment. So the subject property does not actually contain any mapped natural resources, subject to our Natural Resources Code 19.402, but as proposed and as discussed earlier, 40% of the site would be, is proposed to be preserved forest, and a total of 54% of the site would be, would remain in, in vegetation. But the 40% of the site would be in, in a preserved forest manner. And again, the site is not mapped as containing any natural resources, but a significant portion of the site is proposed to remain in its natural condition. Couple of the other objectives within this section talk about protecting open space resources in the city and maintain, and again, because the development is maintaining more than one-half of the site in vegetation and 40% of it in preserved forest, Steph believes that it is, actually, it is responding to this element of the comprehensive plan. Another element of the comp plan, again, the 1989 comp plan, is the residential land use and housing element. The goal statement for this element is to provide for the maintenance of existing housing, rehab of older housing, and the development of sound, adequate new housing to meet the housing needs of local residents and the larger metropolitan housing market while preserving and enhancing local neighborhood quality and, and identity. And one of the planning concepts in the, in the step, the city's housing policies are designed to ensure that existing and future residents are provided housing opportunities coincident with a broad range of housing demands. According to the Housing Needs Analysis that the city put together in 2016, about approximately 30% of future needed housing is, should be, or would need to be, multi-unit development. This property is zoned for high-density residential development, and balancing that against residential, residential land use design is another one of the objectives in the comprehensive plan, and neighborhood conservation is another objective within the comprehensive plan related to this housing element. This, there's a balance of needs and minimizing impacts needed as part of this project. The project does show a wide range of housing, show that a wide range of housing types are needed in Milwaukee, and this represents 100 units of multi-unit development with additional setbacks landscaping. It essentially is, it is serving as a transition between the downtown, higher-density residential development and lower-density residential development in the Waverly Heights neighborhood. And by including all those additional setbacks, landscaping, that preserve forest, it is functioning as, as that transition. Housing choice is an important piece of this element within the comprehensive plan as well. And again, the plan is looking to balance somewhat competing interests that we have here and minimizing impacts to adjacent properties. The plan, the comp plan also talks about the desire for open space and recreational areas as part of these housing developments and preserving existing tree coverage wherever possible. And again, with 40% of this site slated as to be preserved forest, staff believes that this project is in fact meeting that requirement. The Willamette Greenway is an element within the comprehensive plan as well. This property, the subject property, depending on where on the river you're measuring it, is anywhere from 770 to over 1,000 feet from the river, and there is private development between the river and this proposed site, between the Waverly Country Club, as well as residential and high-density residential structures as well. And then finally, there is the neighborhood element. Waverly Heights is a mix of large homes and high-density apartments. That's the description of the Waverly Heights neighborhood within this comprehensive plan. For, again, forest preservation, large setbacks, compact design, high-end design and architecture for the proposed project. All of those elements meet many of the objectives within the neighborhood element of the comprehensive plan. So as we've noted, the proposed site design includes those significant setbacks and buffers. The buildings have a high-end design aesthetic. All of those aspects go to complying with and meeting the objectives of the 1989 comprehensive plan for these key sections. The Willamette Greenway review, staff went over this pretty extensively last time in our hearing, so I will try to kind of compress this a little bit. I don't want to be too repetitive from the last hearing. I know we have folks that want to, want to testify as well. Again, the Willamette Greenway section of the code talks about compatibility with the, with the river, minimal impact on surrounding uses, mitigation of impacts, protection of views, conformance with comp plan policies, landscaping, aesthetic enhancement, et cetera. The project, and you can see it here in this image, the Waverly Woods proposed development area is outlined in blue. You can see where the walking paths maintained forest area has been identified, and then the various land uses that surround this development or are between this proposed development site and the river. Again, the property, and again, it runs anywhere from 770 to 1,000 feet from the river, so it's set quite a ways back from the river itself. Images were provided, as you can see here in the applicant's materials, showing what those views from the river would look like towards the Waverly Woods development. It's been designed to maintain and enhance views. In fact, one of the, and one of the revised site plans that were submitted, the applicant is creating a new viewpoint that is publicly accessible from, from the public right-of-way. And I'll be talking about that in a minute. It comes up in a different section of this presentation. All right. And then the plan development review piece of this, of the project. The subject property is in the R2 zone, which is a high-density residential zone, it's as well as the Willamette Greenway. Again, the plan development review process allows the applicant to effectively create new development standards for the project, including some key departures from the base, from the base code. One of them is a request to increase the building height to 52 feet rather than 55 feet in the R2 zone and 35 feet in the Willamette Greenway Zone. And that 52 feet is from the, at the bottom of the, of the slope on one of the buildings, not at the other, at the other point. So it's between 43 feet and 52 feet, depending on what part of the slope you are looking at the building from. They're requesting a 20% density bonus. They would be permitted 84 units. They're requesting 100. And a couple of the buildings are proposed to be increased from 150 feet in length to 203 feet. And these departures from the base code or the base zone are permitted if the applicant can show that there are exceptional advantages to their development that are not found in similar developments. The applicant submitted additional information as part of the written, written testimony or written comment period for the application in talking about the compact footprint of, of this development. Again, 54% vegetation on the site, 40% forest preserve. They are proposing to relocate and enlarge the community garden for the, on the property. They spent some time describing the architectural advantages and amenities as part of their design, dwelling units with very large balconies. I believe the smallest one, they said, was 195 square feet. That's, those are significant as part of the overall design of the project itself. They spent some time talking about the cross ventilation design of the buildings, as well as the corner, corner windows. So there are some advantages to the, just the- So, there are some advantages to the, just the overall design of the buildings itself and the site. Again, they are proposing a public viewpoint to the river. I'm going to kind of zoom over here. So, in, I've circled here on the revised site plan that was included, they are proposing to develop and create a river viewpoint on the site as well as a walking path and that's all accessible from the public right-of-way. And that would all be part of the Phase 1, Phase 1 development. Again, they've included, as I mentioned earlier, larger landscape buffers to the, to the surrounding neighborhoods. And they also discussed future amenities as part of the project, solar panels and electric car chargers. There are also, again, comments received from the residents of the neighboring properties regarding visual impacts of the proposed buildings to their homes. The applicant submitted revised site plans showing Building A2, again, moved an additional six feet away from the adjacent property line, increasing the proposed setback for a total setback of 49 feet. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there are large setbacks from the buildings to the surrounding residences as well as the Waverly Country Club. And again, this image shows setbacks between buildings ranging from 82 feet to over 200 feet. The applicant submitted building section diagrams illustrating the proposed building height. And again, this is what I was discussing earlier, as, as measured in the code, on the bottom of the slope, the building would be measured at 52 feet and then at the top of the slope, it would be 43 feet. The R2 zone would allow buildings of 55 feet in height. Building height is limited in the Willamette Greenway zone to 35 feet. Okay. All right. I included in the staff report the approval criteria for the key code sections, the Plan Development Code, the Willamette Greenway approval criteria, as well as the approval criteria for zone changes. These are the approval criteria for the Plan Development Zone itself, which seems to be the focus for, of a lot of folks' comments and discussion. Again, compatibility with surrounding area and land uses, demonstrated need for the permitted uses, adequate infrastructure, and that the proposal demonstrates that it addresses a public purpose and provides public benefits and amenities beyond what the base zone would The staff recommendation, as it was at the previous hearing, is to recommend approval to the city council. And as described in the staff report and in the findings, the proposal meets the base requirements, exceeds the design and all of the design guidelines for multifamily development. It's keeping, in keeping with the proposed goals, the purpose and the goals of the Planned Development Code section. The review process for this project, again, so this evening is our continued, continued hearing to, to include written and oral testimony regarding all of the new information. December 15th would be the deadline for the applicant's last written argument. And the continued public hearing for the Planning Commission deliberations would be tentative, or is recommended to be January 12th. The 120-day deadline for this application is January 9th, so we will need a waiver of the 120-day clock because we still need to account for the city council hearing, which could be, when, in looking at the calendar, February 16th. Again, this application is a Type 4 application, requires the Planning Commission to consider whether it's demonstrating compliance with the code sections and to submit a recommendation to the city council. The decision-making options tonight are the same as they were the last time. Again, recommending approval of the application to, to, to council, recommend approval with the modified condition, findings and conditions of approval, which were in your packet, continuing the hearing, could also recommend denial of the application. And whoops, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here with, with their representative for their presentation as well.
Vera, if I may, for a point of clarification for the Planning Commissioners, the decision-making options, those aren't decisions you'll be making this evening. You will not be deliberating until our next meeting. And so, just to make sure that that's clarified.
Thank you, Justin. I should probably have ended on this part. This should be the last one, that the commission's deliberation would be on, on January 12th.
Chair Massey, may I ask a question to staff? He's, he's talking, but he's muted. You're muted, Chair Massey.
Sorry. Yeah. So, clarifying questions for the staff?
May I ask a question, Chair Massey?
You may.
So, when you say 40% forest preserve, is that their proposal or as you have it conditioned currently?
Thank you. That is how they've proposed it as part of their site plan, that, that 40%, and if I may, I can go over to that image, but it's proposed, yes. So, they identified the minimum maintained forest buffer area of 40% and then that 54% is the additional landscaping that's sort of within the development. But, the preserved forest buffer, that open space area is 40% as proposed within their application materials.
But, within their proposal, they, they, they call it a preserve, but without any sort of deed restrictions or anything like that proposed as well?
Correct, correct. The code requires a minimum of 30% of the site to be in open space. As part of the Plan Development Code, they have proposed 40%. So, the, you know, the approval itself requires that open space area, but they did not propose a legal document or a legal mechanism to permanently protect or preserve that area.
And Chair Massey, if I may, ask one more question, and I don't know who needs it, but this is a procedural, this is a procedural question. At the next hearing, are we going to be able to ask questions of staff and the applicant before we deliberate or are we going straight?
We can ask clarifying questions tonight. We just can't really deliberate, you know, the, the recommendation at this point.
Okay. So, then I, and I noticed that Engineer Adams, Steve Adams was on this call, if that is correct? So, I have, I have a question for, I have a question for Mr. Adams.
Go ahead.
So, one of the things is that the intersection is failing from a C to a D, right there at 17th on this project?
I wouldn't say failing, I'd say it's, it's falling from a C to a D.
I'm sorry, falling. I forget that D doesn't, isn't necessarily better. Is, does, if somebody wanted to improve that, to keep it as a C or a B, does ODOT or does the, the road people that are in charge of that, do they allow that to happen? Or is that just a function of what they are going to demand them to do here regardless?
As I recall, this section of 17th between 224 and Lake Road, ODOT is wanting the city to take road authority on it. I do not know if we've actually have done that yet. I know Peter Passarelli was the lead contact with ODOT. I can talk to him about it. The ODOT could have a say in it because of potential impacts to McLaughlin and to 224. The main thing is a cost to put a signal here would be over a quarter million. And it's not in the TSP, so we're not collecting funds to put a signal here.
But, you could make the project developer put in a signal there, correct? Or pay for it?
Not really. My past, I've only, the only requirements of a project developer I have made is if they create a, a huge amount of traffic to, to signalize one leg and then the city would pay to signalize the other two legs. Or I have collected funds, that is a pro-rata share. So, if the development has shown to add 12% to the volume of an intersection, I have been able to collect 12% of the intersection cost from them. I do not think state law would allow me to put the entire cost of an intersection on a single development.
And would that be the only upgrade that could be made to change this from a D to a B or something like that? Is the signaling of that, I mean, a right-hand turn lane or something like that, doesn't?
I'd have to have someone look at more why it is failing. I believe coming down lava, we do have a left and a right turn lane eastbound, if I recall correctly, as we come into 17th. So, that's already handled. I'd have to talk to a traffic engineer and get a little more information on what, if there is any other option besides a signal to bring that back up. And please note that the, the main direction of travel on, on 17th is, is running just fine. It's just the side street that would increase slightly to a D.
Thank you. That's all the questions I had, Chair Massey.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? I have one, Vera. I would just like to confirm that the, the public viewpoint and the public access along the path, those are, those are additions from the last presentation, correct?
Correct. Those are additions, yes.
Yeah. I remember we talked about this, but those were not part of the last meeting's discussion. Okay. Last call for clarifying questions from the?
I have a couple.
I'm sorry?
I have a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the first question is, is there any kind of instrument that we need or is this part of the draft condition of approval to preserve public access to the path and the
I guess, as proposed, the public viewpoint and that path are adjacent to the public right-of-way. The materials from the applicant indicate that they are available and can be accessed by the public from that public right-of-way. I guess I would ask the city attorney if we think that there needs to be, I guess what you're asking Commissioner Edges, if we need an additional instrument to guarantee that. I guess I might ask the city attorney to chime in on, on that.
I believe in the, in the staff report, the, the section of the conditions of approval parrots what the code requires. And if the applicant is proposing some sort of public space to meet one of those requirements and that is a proposal that is going to help the applicant meet its requirements as imposed by the Planning Commission or ultimately council, I guess, for the recommendation to be able to do the development, it would seem to me a logical outgrowth of that to require some sort of document to maintain that public space in perpetuity if it was offered in regards to, or to get the development approval.
And then one clarifying question, because you, you got really close to my second question there, is in terms of parroting the city code, you know, the requirements of the code, is the condition that was drafted and offered by staff, is that, does that go too far in terms of a preliminary plan for requiring protection of more than the minimum requirement? Or is it okay that we require the applicant to, you know, preserve what they propose to be open space and then not really, the percentage of the land area doesn't really apply?
Which condition are you speaking, well, I'll let Vera talk.
4B.
Yeah, the, within the conditions of approval, and that's why it was highlighted in green, was that because the applicant, again, hadn't proposed a legal instrument for the, you know, perpetual preservation of that, of that open space. It's part of their development plan and it's part of their proposal, but it didn't have that additional step of that legal piece of it. The condition of approval is written, I think it's essentially verbatim, it's just pulling the code language into it because I wanted to have it as a placeholder for the commission to discuss whether or not you thought it was necessary to include that legal instrument or that, because the code itself says that the, the permanent or the conservation restriction or easement or what have you may be imposed. It's not required by the code, but it's certainly something that the commission can, can use. The, and it was written such that, that it would be tied to what was proposed as the, you know, the 40% as proposed. That's, that was my intent, should the commission decide that that's the road you want to go down as far as the perpetual preservation of that, then it was intended that it would, that it would cover what was proposed as part of their plan, that full 40% collar that I showed on that, on that image. I don't know if that answered your question, Commissioner Edge, but that was the intent of what we put in that condition of approval.
Yeah, I guess the, the important thing is that it's matching the language of the code and that we're not conditioning anything in excess of what is required by the code. And that's what I was really looking for. So, that does answer my question. Thank you.
Chair Massey, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Sher.
Maybe a similar kind of line of questioning was Commissioner Edge noted, Vera, the, in kind of the exceptional advantages that talk about future amenities, solar panels, electric vehicle chargers, also noting that the applicant, applicant still has some of that work under study and is committed to it, but isn't necessarily conditioned and it doesn't appear that there's any, you know, hard way to kind of make those requirements. Has there been any discussion about kind of working that in as a condition of approval?
I guess the honest answer is no, you know, as far as, you know, including another condition of approval, can certainly have the city attorney kind of weigh in on that. Your, I mean, as an exceptional advantage, you know, we can, I guess I would, I would have Justin weigh in on kind of tying that to a, to a condition of approval. It is something that they've talked about and they're committed to doing, but as you say, how do we sort of guarantee that as part of the overall development? I might ask the city attorney to kind of weigh in on the appropriateness of that.
Well, for those, for those items that are proposed that might not be set in stone yet because they're being studied, I think it's safe to say that you can't count on those because the studies could determine that they don't want to do them. I think you need to concentrate as a decision-making body on concrete proposals that are part of the development application. Certainly, some of those attributes will be in design phase, environmental and sustainability considerations, but as far as something that is being studied at this point and is not a firm proposal or is not able to be pinned down as a condition, I don't think it would be appropriate.
Justin, maybe as a follow-up to that is if the applicant were, were willing to kind of commit to maybe a minimum threshold as opposed to a maximum, so say, you know, a few electric vehicle charging stations as opposed to 42, would, would that be something that might be feasible?
Certainly. I mean, if the applicant is willing to offer up some, some concrete examples of items, you know, a perfect example, not necessarily in this development, but a perfect example of conditions that go into other developments that might come before you review are the number of bicycle parking spaces or bike racks or other amenities that might be required for public improvement. Here, it's more on a voluntary basis to show the, the extraordinary design of the project and to meet other applicable pieces of criteria. But, if the applicant is willing to say, yes, we will provide three electronic vehicle or, excuse me, electric vehicle charging stations, I think to the extent that they're willing to do so, that can become a condition.
All right. Thanks. No other questions?
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions for the staff? Okay. I know that we've received additional correspondence since the package was, was put together, so I'll ask the staff to summarize that additional correspondence.
Thank you, Chair Massey. We received correspondence all today. I think one of the, Steve Stone's comment was sent late last, or yesterday evening was received this morning. It included comments regarding concerns about, again, the, the historic neighborhood of Waverly Heights and talked about the height of the proposed buildings, views and orientation of the proposed buildings, plans about removing disease and neglected diseased and neglected trees, pathways, um, and did request a reevaluation of the building material palette to ensure that it's compatible, uh, with both the surrounding area and with the neighborhood. We also received comments from Patty Justice, um, today as well, again, reiterating comments regarding the compatibility, um, of the, of the development as well as the, um, development within the Willamette Greenway Zone. We received correspondence from the attorney, um, Mike Robinson, representing, uh, Waverly Country Club. Those came in at a little bit after four, uh, this afternoon, and, and identified, uh, various areas that they believe that the application, um, falls short of the requirements, um, and recommends denial of the application. And then we received a little bit after six o'clock, um, correspondence from the applicant, um, regarding, um, the views of the development from surrounding neighborhoods. So there were some graphic representations of what the development would look like from, um, from the surrounding properties. And that's it.
Thank you. So, uh, there were some late submissions, so you may not have had a chance to read all of those, but we will have a chance to, uh, cover those in the coming weeks before the deliberations. Uh, at this point, I will ask the applicant for their testimony, and just as a reminder, I will, uh, allow 15 minutes for your presentation.
Okay. I'm looking at the attendees list and I'm seeing, um, if folks on the applicant's team could just let me know who will be presenting, um, by raising your hand, I can promote you to a panelist. I believe Attorney Connors, thank you, I'm going to promote you, um, so that you may present. All right. Okay, and Mike, I believe I have you over here now as a panelist. You are muted, so if you can unmute, you're ready to go.
And just a reminder, this is 15 minutes for all of the applicant's, uh, presentation. This is not one per person, so.
Thank you, Chair Massey. Appreciate that clarification. Uh, for the record, my name is Mike Connors. I'm a Lane Juice attorney with Hathaway Larson, and my address is 1331 Northwest Lovejoy Street, uh, Suite 950, Portland, Oregon 97209. I am going to handle the bulk of our initial presentation, so I'll be limited to 15 minutes, but we do have representatives from the applicant ownership group as well as our architect and, and other consultants, they're on the call as well, uh, that can, uh, chime in as well, predominantly maybe to provide clarification or answer questions that I may not have the, uh, the background or quick answer, uh, off the top of my head since I've gotten more recently involved in this project. Um, in terms of the presentation, I want to be very respectful of your time. I, I understand that you had a very thorough hearing on October 27th. I don't intend to retread, uh, that material and, uh, also don't intend to go through and address each of the individual issues that have been raised. Uh, you know, we've, uh, submitted some, uh, pretty detailed comments both on November 10th and November 17th, uh, and then we've got our, uh, final, uh, closing argument that we'll be submitting to you on the 15th week from now. We're really going to try to address all those issues and tie everything up. Um, but what I wanted to do today, since we have an opportunity, is just focus on a few key issues or themes that we want you to think about as you're considering the application, uh, adopting your decision, um, next month. Um, and the first, first theme is, uh, we hope it's apparent, uh, but we, but we strongly believe that, uh, that we've really been sensitive to trying to develop a project that will, uh, minimize impacts both to the subject property as well as the surrounding properties. Um, one of the big drivers behind the applicant's decision to pursue the planned development was it allowed for additional flexibility for us to be able to do certain design elements that may not strictly meet the code but would provide for trade-offs that would be, in our opinion, far beneficial than what would otherwise be allowed with a strict application. Um, and you'll see that in some of the elements that you've heard a lot about, um, with the planned development, we're able to do a significantly smaller development footprint, uh, and that's a result of, uh, tuck-under parking, uh, the additional height that allows us to put more density in the individual buildings. Uh, and as a result of that, uh, it's, it allows us to, uh, preserve a significant more amount of the, uh, natural forest that's out there and to provide more, far more open space than is required, uh, because of these elements. Um, it also allowed us to, uh, provide greater buffers, screening setbacks from the adjacent properties. Um, so again, the, the main driver behind the decision to pursue a planned development was within mind that, you know, uh, this is family-owned property, they own, uh, some of the development in the surrounding area, this property's been their family for a long time. So they're, so the family was really striving to, uh, find a development that would, uh, meet the criteria but, uh, and be a superior development and, and be sensitive to the impacts on the surrounding area and try to mitigate those impacts to the greatest extent possible. We've also, uh, done a lot of outreach, uh, with the neighbors, uh, you know, really listened to them, tried to factor in, uh, some of their comments and concerns and issues. Um, you know, we had the, but it's both formally with the Neighborhood Association meeting that we had in July and also informally. We've had individual conversations with some of the closer neighbors, uh, uh, such as the Stones, uh, Waverly Country Club, and we're continuing to have those conversations and open to, uh, further dialogue. One of the late submissions tonight, um, that Bureau referred to was this visualization, uh, uh, slides that we provided, which show what the visual impact would be of our, of the closest building, which is the A2 building, on the Stones' property. Uh, it's some photo simulations that are taken from the Stones' property, and what we're really trying to do in that case is, is show the Stones that we don't believe that the impact is going to be as great as they fear. Uh, now granted, they haven't seen this because this is something that we recently created and, you know, in part in response to some of their latest comments, and we're going to continue to talk to them about it, but, uh, again, just want you to know, uh, and show that as evidence that we're continuing to try to work with the neighbors and address their concerns to the extent that we can. Um, the next sort of theme or key issue I want to emphasize is, um, we're not asking for anything that your code doesn't allow or contemplate. Um, I know that there's been a lot of concern from, uh, neighbors' comments about just the concept of allowing a manif-- uh, excuse me, a multi-family residential development or apartment complex. But in fact, that's what this property is comp plan for and zone for, is high-density residential. Um, and so again, understand that there may be some concern from some of those folks as single, single-family area, but we're doing what the city zone that was implemented on the property requires us to do. So, and for a high-density residential. Um, there's also been some, uh, comments raised about concerns about development within the Willamette Greenway, and it is true, approximately 70% of the site does have a Willamette Greenway, uh, overlay. It's not the entire site, but it's 70%. Uh, but the code doesn't preclude development, doesn't require that the Willamette Greenway be maintained in its current state. What it requires an applicant to do is to develop it in a way that minimizes the impact on the Willamette Greenway. We feel that our proposal really does that, uh, just looking at the amount of the natural forest area that's going to be preserved at 40%, uh, 54% open space. Uh, and again, the idea behind the planned development was really to make this more of a compact development with the tuck-under parking so that we wouldn't have to have more buildings, we wouldn't have to have a lot of surface area, which would have a greater impact on the Willamette Greenway. So again, we've been s- sensitive to that concern. I understand some of the neighbors have concerns about development in Willamette Greenway, but your code doesn't prohibit development, it just requires that, uh, an applicant, uh, try to mitigate those impacts to the, to the Greenway, and we believe that this proposal does that. Um, the planned development, uh, concept, there has been, uh, some comments, concerns about allowing a planned development, but, um, the planned development concept is something that's recognized in your code. It's something that specifically allows an applicant to do what we're trying to do here, which is allow for this flexibility and trade-off, uh, you know, asking for adjustments to certain standards, but in return, providing an exceptional, exceptional design that provides other benefits. And so again, we're not asking you like a variance, we're just, just making adjustments standard for nothing in return. We're asking for something that's expressly contemplated under code. And that includes the phasing concept as well. Uh, there have been some concerns raised about the phasing, but the planned development code section specifically allows for and provides for phasing, um, and that's what we're proposing to do here. So if you look at that as a whole, again, I just, we want to make sure you understand that neighbors have concerns, uh, they're clearly entitled to raise those concerns, you've got to consider those, but we're not asking you to do anything that's not allowed or contemplated under the code. The third issue is to understand the benefits of what the planned development process allows for. Um, you know, it's human nature, when you have neighbors, you have development that's, uh, proposing your neighborhood, get concerned about it, that the focus is on the negative aspect. But this planned development provides for trade-offs, and as an example, look at what are some of the requirements if we just went through under a base zone type of development. Um, under the, uh, R2 zone, uh, open space requirement is only 15%. Uh, would require us to propose five buildings instead of four, and I think that was addressed at the October 27th hearing. Um, it would require significantly more impervious, uh, uh, area, because if we were doing a base zone, we wouldn't be able to do the tuck-under parking, that would mean more surface parking, which would be in a greater area of removal of, of vegetation and trees and more impervious surface, and the setbacks are only five to 15 feet. So if we were looking just as a, at a base zone, uh, type of development, those kinds of, uh, requirements I think are far less than what we're proposing here. So with the planned development and the flexibility that it provides and some of the adjustments that we're asking for the height, building length, density, we're proposing now 54% open space as opposed to 15%, 40% of which will be in that natural buffer which will ring the property on all sides, uh, um, or in three of the, three of the sides, uh, all sides of the neighboring properties, uh, which will provide a significant advantage. Um, it allows for four buildings as opposed to five, which we would need to do without the planned development. It allows for tuck-under parking, uh, which is not only a, a huge advantage for the residents that will be in this, uh, project, uh, but it also avoids having to provide additional surface parking, which again, is a bigger development footprint, more impervious surface, stormwater, and it enable, uh, enables us to provide a superior design. I'm not an architect, so I'm not going to try to get into all the detail, but hopefully from the materi- material that you've read, you can see some of the advantages of this, uh, of being able to provide, you know, the, uh, larger number of windows, views to the river, uh, larger balconies, uh, cross ventilation, the tuck-under parking, the community garden and pool. Uh, this truly will be an exceptional project. Um, and it's only because of the planned development flexibility that we're able to propose what we're proposing. So again, it's the importance of understanding that there's a trade-off and not just focusing on the adjustments that we're talking about or asking for, uh, but also thinking about it on balance with some of the benefits that the flexibility provides. Um, but even if you look at those adjustments, uh, that we're asking for, um, I think you'll see that they're not as significant, uh, or won't have as great of an impact on, as, as some of the neighbors fear. Uh, as an example, on the height, um, we are, uh, exceeding the height for the Willamette Greenway, but it complies with the height that would be allowed under the base zone R2. It's consistent with that. And in terms of the increased height, it's only the A1 and A2 buildings along the ridge line. It does not, we're not asking for increased height on B1 or B2 buildings, which are closer to the majority of the residents. Um, on the length--
Mr. Connors, just so you can pace yourself, you have about three minutes left.
Thank you. On the, uh, on the length, it's 203 feet. Uh, we have some adjacent, uh, nearby apartments at 284 feet in length. Now with our building, we provided a significant recess in the open area that, that gives it some articulation and makes it look more like two structures as opposed to one big monolith structure. And although we are asking for a density of 20% increase, which the code specifically allows, you're getting a smaller footprint. I know that seems odd that you would have greater density but a smaller footprint, but again, it's with that height and the tuck-under parking that allows us to be able to provide a smaller footprint. So those are a number of, of, um, granted, we're asking for adjustments, but a number of mitigating factors, we can consider the impact of those adjustments. Last issue we want to ask you to consider is, um, is staff's position. Um, obviously, this commission is a decision-maker. You're going to have to decide that staff is just giving you a recommendation. But staff is also the only objective party involved in this outside of the commission and is also a party that has a kind of expertise of your city code, how it should be applied, the intent, how it's been applied in other, uh, in other cases. And throughout this process, staff has continued to recommend approval because they agree that we satisfy the criteria, that we meet or exceed certain criteria, um, and that's really what our application needs to be based on, is do we satisfy the approval criteria? So to try to wrap it up, I will say, we, we certainly understand neighbors, you know, have concerns, and, and they still have some concerns and objectives, and we're going to continue to work with them to the extent that we can, delay their fears or, or address their concerns, uh, to the extent possible. But, um, our application needs to be judged based on compliance with the approval criteria. Um, it's probably not going to be possible for us to satisfy all the neighbors on all the issues. We've made a concerted effort to do so, and we really do believe it's a superior project. But we hope that you'll understand that continuation objections is not basis in self-to-denial. You really have to decide it based on the approval criteria. And we think if you do, you'll find that we not only meet, but we exceed the criteria in several regards. And again, if I go back to that comparison, if you look at the type of development that could, uh, be developed on this property under the base zone, I don't think it would be something that this commission or the neighbors would prefer over what we've proposed. We really did, you know, they, my clients really did put in concerted effort, looked at various development options and landed on this, and a big part of it was to ensure not to just do the bare minimum, but to provide an exceptional development and to be sensitive and try to minimize the impacts not only to the surrounding neighbor but on the subject property itself. And we believe that we've met that balance, and we hope that you agree with us on that. Uh, and so with that, I'll, it concludes my, uh, initial comments, and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions, either myself or from other, uh, team members.
Thank you, Mr. Connors. Are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. Hamer.
Uh, I'm going to start with the weird one first. Uh, has your applicant been out there to see how many golf balls have wandered over there from the driving range? And is there any concern? Uh, because when I work on my draw, sometimes it turns into a duck hook. Uh, so, uh, is there concern that the driving range is going to be in conflict, uh, with the building and breaking windows?
So I haven't had that specific conversation with my client. I'd be happy to let them, uh, comment on that, but I will say, if you look at the distance, uh, of our, of our property and the buildings to the driving range, we're talking about close to 100 feet. Uh, and then you're going to have, that's part of that buffer, natural buffer that it's going to remain as is on that part of the project. So I think the chances of potential golf balls reaching out over into the area where the buildings are located is, is, uh, is highly unlikely, even for someone like me who's an absolutely terrible golfer. Uh, but it's something that can certainly, we, we can consider, and the, the other thing I just wanted to say is, we're having ongoing conversations with the club. Um, it's not just us saying that. I think Mr. Robinson acknowledged that in his letter. Um, we're, we're continuing to talk to them, and as part of that conversation, we're happy to consider that particular issue, because we're really open to anything within reason, and what we're trying to do is get a better understanding of what really is the club's concern. I mean, their attorney has raised a number of issues, but it's just sort of like a shotgun approach. It's not really clear to us what are their, from a practical standpoint, what are their specific concerns, and what would they like us to do to address those? But those conversations are ongoing, and, you know, we're hopeful that we'll be able to reach an agreement with them, uh, with them on it and resolve all their issues.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I have a couple more if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so would your client, um, consider putting in, uh, visitor parking for non-residents so that-- So would your client consider putting in visitor parking for non-residents so that the public could be able to access the viewpoint and the pathway in a vehicle instead of being worried about private residence parking and being towed away?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, and certainly we can consider, because this is somewhat of a new issue and hadn't really thought about on that. So yeah, that's something that we can certainly consider. I don't know that there's room for it, but if it's something that can be accommodated, I don't think we would have an issue with accommodating if it's something that can be accommodated.
And then my last question, if I could, Chair Massey. Would your client be willing to put in place a deed or a warrant for the remaining forest preserve to not remove trees unless they hold harm to safety or to health?
Yeah. I appreciate you asking that question. That is an issue I did want to address, it came up in your deliberations. I don't believe that a conservation easement or de-dedication is required in order to accomplish that goal. And honestly, I haven't seen that for a development where a conservation easement is used. Here, what you have is a proposal where we're proposing a specific building layout and proposing preservation of a specific amount of open space and natural area in its existing condition. I believe that your approval of our proposal is enough to provide an enforceable condition requiring us to maintain it. And if we were going to try to do some sort of change, we would have to come back to the city to do it. And this is part of the conversation that we had with staff about this particular condition. And that is, I was the one that asked the first question. I'm not really sure that it's necessary because I do believe that the approval of the planned development as proposed, and even a condition that specifically talks about the amount of open space, would be sufficient to achieve that goal. And that is that we would have an approval with a specific allocation of open space, forest area, and if we were to deviate from that, the city would have a provision in which to enforce violation of our approval. So I don't see that it's necessary, and I think it's a little bit more cumbersome to do the conservation easement, de-dedication. But I do believe that the city can accomplish its goal by approving it as proposed with the specific open space that's being proposed by the applicant.
So you'll agree with this, my statement is that open space doesn't necessarily mean forest land. So are you willing to call it then a forest preserve as open space and not just a grassy knoll or something like that? To protect the trees from just being fallen so that views can be observed to the river without hindrance?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I quite understood the last part.
I'm sorry. So I don't want to get into deliberations, but one of the worries could be is that trees would be removed so that the apartments could still be able to view the river. And so if you call it as a forest preserve instead of just an open space, would you be open for that?
Yeah, that may be something. Again, I can't speak for my client, but I understand the distinction you're drawing, and it makes more sense. Thank you for that explanation. And certainly something that we can talk about and, you know, something that we can address in our closing argument, because really what it is, is just something that you can address through a condition of the decision. And again, as opposed to some form of formal easement or de-dedication, which I don't personally think is necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up for community testimony. Do we don't have any folks wish to speak yet, Barrow?
I have one raised hand, Mr. -
Okay.
Two folks have raised their hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm not going to try to parse support or opposed or neutral. We'll just take them one at a time.
Okay. I'm going to, Erin Forbes, I'm going to bring you over as a panelist. I'm just going in order on my screen. So Erin, I'm going to promote you to panelist so you can speak. Patty Justice, you will be next. All right, and, okay, Erin, you are on my panelist screen now to make your comments.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Erin Forbes. I am with the law firm of Schwab, Williamson &amp; Wyatt. I'm here on behalf of Waverly Country Club, and our address at the firm here in Portland is 1211 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 1900, Portland, Oregon 97204. Earlier this afternoon, my office submitted our fourth letter opposing the application issue here tonight. And I'll keep this short because I know you don't want anything repetitive. We are maintaining our opposition to the application for all of the reasons set forth in our four letters, and we respectfully request that the planning commission recommend denial of the application for those reasons that we have discussed previously. And we appreciate the planning commission's time and the applicant's time in reading our submissions, and thank you very much for listening to us and taking your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Who's next?
Let me unmute myself. Sorry, Patricia Justice, sorry, Patty Justice, I am going to promote you to panelist so that you may speak. Okay. All right, Patty, you are now a panelist, so if you unmute yourself, you can make your presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Justice. Go ahead.
Huh, but you can't see me. I guess that's okay. My name is Patricia Justice. I live at 10252 Southeast Cambridge Lane in Milwaukee in Waverly Heights. Before I begin my comments, I just want to answer the question about the golf balls. My property borders the driving range, and golf balls landing on my property are a regular occurrence. Okay, my comments tonight are intended to supplement my letter to you dated today, December 8th, addressing a multifamily development adjacent to single-family homes, and the relevant codes are in the letter. To get to my house, I have to walk the full length of Cambridge Lane, and I do this almost every day on my morning walk. Walking up Cambridge Lane and approaching the end, I can see the fence and beyond it, a gnarly woods. Other than running a herd of goats on it a couple of times to clear the underbrush, the woods has been pretty much left to ramble on its own for probably well over 50 years, and that woods has given us privacy. But in a very few short years, when we approached the end of this lane, we will first confront a three-story apartment building, now called B2, with windows and balconies facing us. And looking to the right, down the driveway, leading to the stones, the reams, and my residence, a four-story apartment building, now called A2, will rise just opposite the stone place. Not only will the tenants of both buildings have a line of sight to our adjacent properties, but we will see lights from their windows at night. And just as an aside, right now, to get around my property or to go to the neighbors after dark, I need to use a flashlight. In addition, the plans call for a walking path right by the fence, further diminishing our privacy. I have known for many years that this property would someday be built with apartments. So the question can be asked, how can the applicants protect that level of privacy that we have enjoyed for many years? Here are possible solutions in no particular order. One, limit the windows and balconies on the sides facing us. Two, don't place walking paths between the buildings and the fence. Three, reduce the four-story apartment buildings to three stories. Four, move both buildings further to the south, increasing the distance between us. And five, choose a color palette and materials compatible with a forested setting. And last, concerning screening. As you may know by now, we have met with the owners and landscape architect to discuss screening and landscaping. While we agreed to work together on trees and shrubs, I do not believe that landscaping alone will resolve these concerns. We need commitment and certainty that our privacy will be protected and maintained, and the Milwaukee Municipal Code criteria and the comprehensive plan require it. And this concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Justice.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have Gloria Stone has requested to speak. Gloria, I am promoting you to panelist. And you are here, but you are muted. You can begin your testimony.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Stone.
Okay, thank you. My name is Gloria Stone. My husband and I live at 10230 Southeast Cambridge Lane, and I will comment as well about the golf balls, just for interest. We have golf balls in our front yard every day. We've submitted multiple documents and photographs to the city and have testified previously relative to this proposed development. I will not reiterate what I hope you've all had an opportunity to read and understand. Make no mistake, this development looks directly into Waverly Heights, our yard and our home of 50 years, from some 65 to 70 feet above our land. As of this point in time, the height of the buildings has not been clearly identified for us. It should include the mechanical and the slope of the roof because that's what we are looking at. The developer talks about the exceptional nature of their development as the reason the city should grant approval. Let me talk to you just a minute about exceptional. First, what is exceptional is the developer's request for approval of a plan that meets neither the Willamette Greenway, the comprehensive plan, or the Milwaukee Municipal Code requirements. That is exceptional. There's no reasonable criteria for abolishing those approved documents that have been designed by and for the citizens of Milwaukee. The very amenities the developer cites as exceptional will have a negative impact on our existing neighborhood. There's no reason the developer can't adhere to the existing urban planning rules and expand an apartment community that is attractive to future residents while incorporating measures to protect our surrounding community. They should be proud to do so as a contributing entity to historical Milwaukee. Second, our community adjacent to the planned development is exceptional in every way. I hope you've taken the time to read the history of this neighborhood. It's well worth your time. The neighborhood was plotted in the 1800s, and to this day, residents, old and new, are meticulous stewards of our land and our homes. The Waverly Heights neighborhood is zoned R10, but large lots and acreage have been maintained in a pristine manner, keeping the urban forest in place, providing a haven for robust wildlife inventory, an inventory we provided you. There are remnants of the Lambert and the Llewellyn orchards, both here on our properties and on the development site. Historic homes designed by Portland's renowned architects are in this neighborhood, some on the National Register. These attributes are exceptional. We ask you to seriously consider the exceptional quality of this neighborhood. We are an asset to the city. Simply said, this neighborhood is the crown jewel of historic Milwaukee. This development in its current form adversely impacts our low-density, quiet neighborhood, our families, and the history we offer the city of Milwaukee. Issues can be resolved. We've reached out to the developer and the city with reasonable requests and suggestions for mitigation required in this unusual situation. Until there is written assurance and a plan in place to meet the requirements of Milwaukee's planning documents, we firmly recommend denial of this application in its current form. And I'll just add an additional comment. Tonight, you talked about the new overlook that's been planned as being public. In the last testimony, when you talked about public, the developer was very clear in saying the paths would not be open to public access. And we're relying on that being the case. Public paths going around that property and up our entire fence line, a mere 30 feet from our windows are not, they just aren't doable. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Excellent. A little excited, but good.
At this point, I will offer the applicant any rebuttal or additional comments in response to the public testimony. Please limit those responses to less than five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Chair Massey, members of the commission, for the record, Mike Connors on behalf of the applicant. I'll go ahead and address some of the issues, starting with Ms. Stone, since she just testified last. First of all, as indicated in my comments, we're not asking you to disregard your code. What we're asking you to do is apply your code and allow for a planned development process as expressly contemplated under your code. You know, the real criteria is, do we satisfy the applicable approval criteria? We believe we do, as stated in the application, the supplemental information, and we'll also address that in the closing argument. I think staff agrees with that as well, based on the two staff reports that you've seen. So to be clear, we're not asking for any exception to the standards. We're asking for you to allow us to follow a process expressly allowed under your code and judge us based on the approval criteria. And, you know, look, I've been doing this for 25 years. I get the fact that people who have a vacant area near their property don't want to see change, but that's part of living in a city. That's part of having the zoning so that not only you as a property owner know what you can develop on your property and rely on that zoning code to know what kind of proposal could pass muster. But the same applies for properties that are adjacent or around you. What we're asking to do, put a multifamily residential, is expressly contemplated under the code, given the zoning. And so, again, we're doing what your code requires. In terms of the height of the buildings, that's determined based on your code, how the code defines height. That's what we're basing our determination of height, and I believe, or I know that staff agrees with us on that interpretation. In terms of the paths, Ms. Stone's correct. There is that public viewpoint that we talked about, but we're not proposing a park here. We're not intending to open up the trails to the public at large. The trails will be there for residents of the complex, the apartment complex, that will be able to use those, but it won't be opened up more broadly to the public. And in terms of visual impacts, hopefully, the Stones will have an opportunity to review that material, the recent material that we submitted, because we believe it really will show that the impacts that they're concerned about, we don't believe are going to be as great as they fear. There's substantial screening there, which is what, just what, and to be clear on those visualizations, that's just with the existing trees and vegetation. Doesn't account for the landscaping and additional trees that we're going to plant. So that's sort of a quote-unquote "worst-case scenario" of what they're going to see, which will be improved with the additional plantings. And in terms of Ms. Justice's comments, you know, again, understand that this is how the property's been vacant, but, you know, change happens, and really the key is, do we satisfy the criteria? And on some of the solutions that she had mentioned, some of those are ones that we can have further conversations and consider, things like on the color. But some of them, in terms of like limiting windows and walking paths, you know, that's not a restriction under the code, and that's part of the amenities that we're providing to justify the planned development. And if we were to reduce the height or move the buildings, it would, you know, not enable us to be able to provide, preserve as much of the open space. And that's something I do really want to emphasize, I know you've heard a lot about it, but with respect to people's concerns about the impacts, that's- that's a big part of the driver on our planned development proposal is to provide that buffer around the entire property, the buffer with the adjacent single-family residents that is far in excess of what's required under the code. And that is precisely to be responsive and sensitive to those neighbors' concerns. I don't think that there's much more we could do, because if you start saying you have to do more than what's even required in the 15%, at a certain point, you're not going to be able to develop the property. And so, you know, again, understand that some of the neighbors would prefer that it stays at its quo, and new changes can be unsettling, but hopefully, this commission understands that your charge is to review it under the approval criteria. And hopefully, you can see the significant efforts that we've made even before this process started with the planned development concept to be responsive to some of those neighbors' concerns, in particular, those neighbors that are adjoining our property. And with that, I don't know if there's anybody else on our project team that wants to add anything with my remaining time, but I'll throw that out there as an option. That concludes my rebuttal.
Chair Massey, if I may, we moved from testimony to applicant rebuttal before having an opportunity for the commission to ask any questions. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Connors, I had a quick question for you. In kind of reviewing some of the written submittals, testimony from neighboring residents, there were some concerns about kind of noise impacts from construction, specifically blasting, you know, the basalt. I was curious if you and the applicant have had any conversations about a willingness as a condition of approval to give public notification, you know, 30 days in advance, maybe maintain a website with, with part of that construction schedule so that, you know, adjacent property owners or even property owners further out would be well aware of what those impacts might look like and when, so they could time vacations or other things. Have there been any discussions about those types of issues?
Not to my knowledge. That's the first time I've heard that suggestion. And it's me speaking. It's possible that there were some other conversations, but I'm certainly not aware of any. But yes, I do think that that's something that my client would be willing to consider. If you're talking about notification, I understand the point that you're making. Again, I can't, can't speak for them, but it's certainly something within the realm of possibility, and we will give it some consideration.
Also, Chair Sherman, I have some personal experience I can add to blasting, if I might speak and respond.
Go ahead.
Okay. In my past, I was a geotechnical engineer before I came to work for a city government. And specifically here near the sunny, Sunnyside Road development, I was involved if a building being constructed there, and there was an adjacent building was concerned that the blasting to create the basement would create damage to their building. And as a staff member, I went out and I put, installed an accelerometer into the ground to measure vibration caused by the blasting, and we also had a machine recording sound. The explosives used for industrial blasting, construction blasting are very, are pretty low-grade. They don't make much noise at all, and they do not do much vibrational. I was across the street, so I was probably 100 feet from where the blasting was occurring, and nothing registered high on the accelerometer, high enough to cause any kind of structural or cosmetic damage. And the sound was very low-key. It was less than what you'd hear from a truck or a car driving by on the street.
Thanks. I appreciate that, Steve. Maybe the Looney Tunes episodes when I was little got me confused. Although I do think, you know, there was some written testimony about that, and it would probably be appreciated by the neighbors to have that courtesy.
Yeah. Notification is understood. That's how I came to be out there on the site, because that one building notified the owners around it that they were doing blasting. And I was, my company was contracted to go out there and do it. But it was, I was surprised at how quiet it actually was that day I was out there working. So just some past history.
Are there any other clarifying questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Sure. Before we close, let me say the hearing tonight will be continued to January 12th for Planning Commission deliberation. The earliest hearing date with the city council would be February 16th, an extension of the 180-day clock as required from the applicant. We would recommend that the extension be provided through February 18th to account for the issuance of a notice of decision. There will be no deliberation tonight, as we've already talked about. According to the review process for this application, the applicant is afforded seven days within which to provide a final written argument. And the deadline for the submittal of that final written argument is the close of business on December 15th, with the hearing to be continued through January 12th, 2020. So at this point, the public testimony portion of this hearing, P-2020-001, is now closed. And we will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to January 12th, 2021.
Sorry, if I could, Chair Massey, I just wanted to confirm with Attorney Connors that the applicant does agree to extend the 120-day clock through February 18th to be able to accommodate the city council hearing in February. I just wanted to make sure that we had that confirmed on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to try to jump in there. Yes, we absolutely will agree to that extension.
Okay.
I would also, I would also like to add a point of clarification. Chair Massey referred to the close of business. I just wanted to clarify that that's 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Do we need to dial right into the motion? Justin?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. That's just, the applicant has final written argument due in seven days. So it would be next Tuesday by 5:00 PM. I think that's clear enough.
So our motion only needs to specify January 12th?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's the, that's the next hearing.
Okay, great. So I'll move that we continue the hearing to a date certain of January 12th, 2021?
Second?
I have a second. All in favor, say aye, and please raise your hand so I can do an easy count. All commissioners in attendance have indicated that they agree. So this decision will be a recommendation to the city council, which might make the final decision after a public hearing. So if you have questions, please see the planning staff for details concerning the city council hearing date and process. At this point, we're going to move on to the next agenda items, which is, those who are here for the Waverly deliberations are always welcome to stay, but we're going to move on to another agenda item, which is the temporary use code amendments with regard to emergency shelters. So the public hearing on ZA-2020-001 is called Order. The purpose of this item is to discuss proposed amendments and provide directions to staff regarding and desired revisions to the proposed amendments. The applicant has the burden of proving that the application is consistent with the city of Milwaukee zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and any applicable municipal code provision, and the proposal conforms with all of the city's applicable criteria. I will recognize those persons who may have completed a testimony card or indicated a desire to testify on the Zoom platform. And when you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record so that they may be entered into the minutes. If you testify, please remember to confine your remarks to the application, relevant criteria, and to avoid repetition and irrelevant information. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the council regarding whether the proposal conforms with all of the city's applicable criteria. I would now ask the staff to cite the zoning ordinance section or sections where the criteria can be found.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Milwaukee Municipal Code Section 19.902, Amendments to Maps and Ordinances, and Milwaukee Municipal Code Chapter 19.1000, Review Procedures.
Thank you. Does any member of the Planning Commission wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest? No? Please indicate by saying no. Can you kind of hear everyone?
No.
No.
I don't have any, I have negative responses from all of the planning commissioners in attendance. Does any member of the Planning Commission wish to abstain? No?
No.
No.
None of the planning commissioners wish to abstain? Does any member of the Planning Commission wish to report on any ex parte contacts? No? I don't see any ex parte contacts from the commissioners.
Chair Massey, is this the right script for a zoning ordinance amendment?
This is the one I have from the city staff. Does any member, but your point is taken. I'm not sure that it's absolutely necessary, but I'm just going to follow the script for now, so bear with me. Will any commissioner who's visited this, well, obviously, there's no site to visit, so we'll, we'll forego that. Commissioner Edge's point is taken. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the participation of any member of the Planning Commission? We have anything on Zoom? So let's proceed to the staff report presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Okay. Okay. Once again, I hope everyone can see a PowerPoint presentation. Great. Okay. Good evening. Vera Colley, Senior Planner, here to present zoning code amendments, proposed amendments regarding temporary emergency housing. Okay. Staff was before the Planning Commission in November during a work session to talk about the proposed amendments. I think you'll see from the staff report, as well as the actual proposed language itself, that we have stripped down the proposed code amendments based on our discussion with the commission. We are proposing a two-phase approach to temporary and transitional housing. So the first phase is to formalize a process for temporary emergency shelters for warming, cooling, or hazardous air quality. And that's the, that's the phase that we're in right now for these specific code amendments. The second phase, we would be focused on permanent and semi-permanent transitional housing, where staff is in the initial stages of research for that phase, and we anticipate conducting a needs analysis and begin discussions in the second half of this year, or sorry, the second half of 2021. And then finally, at some point, we will be working on a third aspect of the issue related to emergency management situations, but that's a little ways down the road, where we will talk about short- and longer-term emergency shelters and emergency planning efforts with the city. So right now, this code amendment is related to allowing indoor emergency housing as a temporary use during extreme cold or heat events or during hazardous air quality events. Okay. Within the staff report, we included the proposed code language and the requirements and limitations is, within that code language, we are, we are proposing to limit these temporary indoor sheltering situations to no more than 90 days in any 12-month period, and that would allow for one 30-day extension as well. And within this, we would be including, not as part of the code, but that the, any approval of these temporary use permits would be subject to the Milwaukee and the Clackamas Fire District Joint Policy for Temporary Emergency Shelters. That was included as an attachment to the staff report as well, so you could see what that, what that language talks about. So, and those, that language, those standards are provisions for life safety requirements, such as smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, means of egress, responsible person in charge, et cetera. So again, this is quite a bit different from the code amendments that we brought before you as part of our work session. Again, this is a stripped-down code language that is related specifically to indoor sheltering for warming and cooling shelters and during events of air quality, hazardous air quality. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Leila Amon, our Community Development Director, is on this meeting as well to be able to answer any questions that she and her staff are working on, as well as part of this overall process regarding temporary and transitional housing.
Commissioner Hemmer has some clarifying questions. Go ahead.
So in the Clackamas Fire District policy, there is this red line about 155 square feet because of COVID, blah, blah, blah. Does that go back to normal once COVID is no longer declared? Or does that go back to the old language? Or is that always permanently going to stay there, I guess?
I'm going to start that answer, and then maybe Leila wants to jump in. But, and Commissioner Hemmer, you're bringing up the, so normally, the occupant load for one of these indoor shelters is 35 square feet for any one individual, and that's been expanded to 110 square feet of net room to recommend for physical distancing during the COVID-19 situation. I don't know if the intent is to go back to the 35 square feet. Of course, this effectively reduces the number of people that can be in any one shelter, so it is a limitation, obviously a trade-off, as we're balancing against public health situations. So I think this is the temporary shelter policy that was enacted prior or that was talked about prior to COVID-19. So I might presume that it would go back to the original number once there isn't a public health situation. But Leila, maybe you have some more information about, about that. But that would be my guess, that we would in fact go back to that so more folks can be accommodated in a shelter, but I don't know for sure.
Yeah, no, I think the only thing I want to add to what Vera says is exactly right, is that one of the things we are doing is coordinating with our emergency operations coordinator as well, who's coordinating with the county. And so we'll probably track, since this is a joint policy with Clackamas Fire, and it's the same policy that we noted in the staff report they have with Oregon City and then with the county as a whole. So we'll just track with them likely in terms of when those changes will go back to quote-unquote "normal," because they may not. So we'll be coordinating with them, and that was part of the effort that we made over the last couple of weeks is engaging with them on this.
And how does this policy get updated? So, right, if we're just copying Oregon Cities or we're copying the county with the fire district, does ours automatically then go with Clackamas County? Or does city council initiate if they want to make a change? Does Clackamas Fire District initiate a change? Does anybody know how that process works?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think it's all of the above. So I think we certainly have the ability to make adjustments. And since it is a joint agreement, the thing I'll point out is that this is also a joint agreement between the building departments, because typically, when you're regulating something, this is for a non-residential use specifically. So it's been fairly thoroughly vetted with building officials in our neighboring communities. And so my guess is, is that we, we will, we would and we should sort of revisit this, but that we will be coordinating, as I said, with the county on emergency response, of which this is. So I think as long as we're maintaining those open lines of communication with the county, we'll be sure to be aligning with that. And if we have ideas about how to improve it, that's also an avenue in which we can take to have conversations, both with Clackamas Fire and the county as well. So I think it's a, it's a two-way street.
And then I just, I'm sorry, I have two more questions. So if I want to come in and I want to be a cooling station, right, do I come in and get one 90-day permit? Or do I get a day-by-day permit for that? Or is it just by, let's say, the American Legion wants to be a cooling center, that they buy a permit for a year, and they can be heating, cooling, hazardous air, as long as they don't exceed 90 days? Or do you understand what I mean by that question?
I do, and I see Leila's not, she's still muting herself, so she wants me to answer the question. It's a good, it's a good question. I think because, I'll, I'll speak specifically as a, as a warming shelter, to your point, Commissioner Hemmer, there are specific sort of triggers for that, you know, when the weather is, you know, presumed to be below 33 degrees, or there is, you know, a snowstorm, or, you know, something like that. So because of the limitation of the timeframe of the 90 days, and generally, when we have these come through, folks are sort of letting us know, you know, that, you know, this is when they're going to, they are going to do it. Otherwise, they kind of continually having Otherwise, they kind of continually having to be telling us that, you know, this weekend or, you know, this thing. So generally, you know, we would write one permit approval for that, but with all of these stipulations and, and these restrictions and that sort of thing as part of it. I think to your example, though, of someone wanting to be heating and cooling and, you know, hazardous air, I guess we'd, it's probably given sort of the time of year that those are, it would, it would make more sense to kind of have those be a bit more specific. So it's a warming shelter, we sort of kind of count the days. We generally don't have 90 days of 30-degree weather here, and we probably never will. But, so it would make more sense for them to sort of keep it as compressed as possible given the restriction of the, of the number of days that they're permitted. So to the extent that they can sort of look at the weather and, but, and, but we've not, as to I, to my knowledge, we've never had to sort of enforce on something like that and that someone exceeded the 90 days for, for anything like that. So I think it's sort of a case-by-case basis that we would be issuing those permits.
And I'm sure that you just not, did not suggest that we're going to put in a law and then not enforce it. Because then there would be no reason for a law, so.
No, no, no. We didn't have to. We didn't have to enforce on it. That was.
And then what I worry about when I, when I hear permit, I think fee. And we know that most of these are charitable organizations that probably cannot afford very much. Have we been given thought to a fee structure? Or since the library in City Hall is considered a warming and cooling shelter and a probably hazardous air quality area, are we not going to charge a fee because we see government buildings as these in essence amongst themselves?
If I, so our temporary use permits, we have not charged a fee for any of them. So there, there is not a fee for, the temporary use permit is what we also used as an example for the outdoor seating that we were doing as part of the social distancing piece for restaurants. So we have not been charging a fee for any of our temporary use permits. No.
Other clarifying questions for the staff?
Maybe following up on, apologies, go ahead.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sherman.
I was going to say, following up on Commissioner Hemmer's question about the, the, is this one permit for a 90 days? Or is it a permit that is like a punch card that could be good for up to 90 days? It, it seems like a kind of a strict reading of the code, of the proposed code suggests the latter, that it's more the punch card kind of approach, except for, I would say the kind of the final clause, the, with an option for one 30-day extension, kind of conflates the two. And so we might want to entertain, I don't know, a slight amendment on that for, you know, something, maybe something along the lines, you know, with an option for up to an additional 30-day extension, just to kind of add that additional clarity.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused on that, too. If I can jump in. So is, is the idea to offer that flexibility then? So you've got 90 days in a year and you can just pick and choose which days? Or is it supposed to be a 90-day chunk, which is a season? You know, it's basically three months as a season. And so I'm getting a 90-day permit to be a cooling center, or I'm getting a 90-day permit to be a warming center this winter. And if I need a 30-day extension in March because we have a cold snap that lasts in March, then I get the 30-day extension in March. Is that the way it's supposed to work? Or is it like we said, this à la carte, you know, just put all the days together until you stack up to 90 and then ask for another 30? That's kind of, kind of weird, the way that it reads.
It's a, it's a good question, and thank you for bringing, bringing it up. We've had, so my experience so far has been kind of exclusively, well, except for the, sort of during the wildfires, but that was a little bit different because it was more for the RVs and stuff, but has been for the warming shelters. And so no one's ever exceeded or come anywhere near the 90 days for the, for the, for the warming shelters. So in trying to kind of pull in the cooling, warming, and the hazardous air quality as part of, part of this whole thing, I think generally it was more about us knowing sort of for a season. It's a good point because I can imagine, you know, any particular shelter being able to accommodate any one of these events, right? So, so it makes sense to kind of think about, you know, what's the right way to administer that, you know? Is, is it, you know, Northwest Housing as a total example, you know, kind of, here's my permit, but it's more, but it is also about us knowing sort of when it's been activated. So we do kind of want to have a sense of understanding kind of when that is, when it's the warming situation, sort of we knew, because we all know when that gets activated from the, at the county level. So it's a good question about how we, how we ought to, how we ought to think about how that gets issued. Is it sort of the à la carte piece that we know specifically?
That just sounds terribly difficult to administer.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. You, yeah, yep.
May I make a suggestion on that? Actually, it's fairly easy to, I think, administer. Every time that the city manager or dedicated individual to making the emergency decision, everybody gets a punch card that has a permit. So it would probably be very rare that we have 120 days where air quality, heating and cooling is all that. So you would buy a permit for a year, right? And, and then you would get, you know, you just keep track of how many emergencies there were, and if it goes over 120 days, or it goes over 90 days, and you go to these permitted people and say, hey, do you want to extend your permit? I don't think that's hard. I think that's pretty easy. All you got to do is just track that. Right? So it'd be a punch card system, basically.
Chair, could I add?
Go ahead.
Thank you. That's a great point, and I think the other thing that would have to happen is there's setup involved to create these centers. So there's some efficiencies there, but I appreciate what the commission is discussing. I think the thing we would have to keep in mind if we took a route like that is that each time that is set up, it does require the building official and the fire department to do an inspection. And so that's maybe a way that we would be notified, is that perhaps, subject to their permit getting issued, is that they would also need to then inform us so that they're not necessarily authorized until those, those inspections have taken place. Because those need to happen when the facility is, is set up. And the other thing I would just add is that the 90 days really comes from the building code where you can't exceed a non-residential use. And we don't want to be promoting that as a, as a use anyway. We don't want to be encouraging people to use non-residential space for, for that type of use, but just so folks know that that's where that limitation came from.
I understand your point, and I don't want to argue with you, but, so I guess when I kind of read this, it, it, it sounds like to me that it's not every day a setup, but it's first day of occupancy. Yeah, I don't know. You're right. However, however, I, I think that if, once a year, these places got inspected and they passed, I think that they would maintain those standards, right? Instead of every time they set up. What you don't want to have happen is a high air quality thing happen and the shelters open up, and then somebody says, well, let me see your permit, and then we, then the city has to go around and go shut these things down. Or if you have 15 in town, does your building inspector have all day for high, for bad air quality to go drive around and check all 15 places? I mean, that seems like a logistic nightmare, too.
I was just going to chime in and mention that I accidentally cut off Commissioner Coserbadi earlier, so I wanted to give him the opportunity to speak and also maybe make the point that perhaps what we do is just empower the 90 with the 30-day, and we let staff figure out how they want to administer this program. And that way, we're, we get ourselves out of the kitchen and let them figure out what works best for how they want to run the permit counter.
So quick, quick question. If one of these were appealed, would it come to the planning commission? Is this a type one or a type two?
It's neither. It's a, it's an, it's, it's not a land use decision. It's an administrative department that just comes through for the department. That's it. So, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, yeah.
Well, a nice thing, we know that Oregon City and other jurisdictions have figured this thing out. So I mean, it's just a copy and paste, really, just to ask them how they kind of do it, too. I mean, I guess, I guess we're getting a little into the weeds just by kind of interpreting what this letter's supposed to mean. Somebody's already interpreted it.
Okay. Any other questions to the staff? So let me just ask the staff, I think I know the answer to this. Have we received any correspondence or anyone indicating that they wish to testify on this matter?
We have not, no.
Yeah, I kind of thought so. Okay. Okay. So the public testimony portion of this hearing on ZA-2020-001 is now closed. So are the commissioners ready for a discussion? I think they are. So would we like to move to a motion at this point, or do we need additional discussion?
I'll make a motion unless somebody has discussion.
I feel comfortable without discussion.
I'm sorry?
I feel comfortable voting with, or, you know, making a decision now.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like, I would like to make a motion to recommend the city council ZA-2020-001, approval of the application and adopt, and adoption of the recommended findings of approval found in attachment two.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand so I can do a quick count. All of the commissioners in attendance voted in the affirmative. This decision is a recommendation to the city council, which will make the final decision after a public hearing. Please see the planning staff details concerning the city council hearing date and process. The next item on the agenda is.
Chair Massey, may I say something before we move on, just real quick?
Sure.
I, I just want to thank the planning staff for separating these things out. I think this was the right move, and, and I want to thank you for thinking about it and going to the fire department and finding out that they had already something in place. And so I just want to thank the staff for taking the time. And I do want to remind you that we have an organization called CERT in this city that, you know, does have two designated evacuation-type setups for the citizens. So, and I know our, our great emergency manager for the city has already met with them and has started to develop some relationships. So I just hope that that continues along with the PSAC work that has been going on as well. So thank you.
Notes are well taken. Thank you. The next agenda item, our work session items regarding an update on the Central Milwaukee Bike Way Concepts Plan and proposed revision to Title 18 Flood Hazard Regulation Amendments. I will now ask the city staff to make their presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to make sure you can all hear me.
We can hear you fine. Thank you, Brett.
Perfect. So I'm Brett Kell, we're an associate planner with the city. And if it's all right, I'm going to share my screen for a couple of presentations. All right. So can everyone see my shared screen? Yes, perfect. Okay. Thank you. So the first item that I'm going to discuss with you tonight is, I'm going to give you an update about our project to develop a concept plan for bike way connections through the central Milwaukee area. For starters, just to clarify for folks, the area we're talking about representing in this graphic, Central Milwaukee, it's effectively bounded by Highway 224 on the west and along the south, 37th Avenue on the east, and then kind of along the northern edge, the, the county's Hillside Development, Providence Hospital, Providence, Milwaukee, with Harrison Street kind of running through the area. So this area in red here is kind of what we're talking about generally when we talk about the central Milwaukee area. To zoom in just a little bit, there are some specific spots that are important here. As I mentioned before, we have what we consider some opportunity sites, sites that we recognize have some, some serious redevelopment potential. One that I'm sure you're aware of, the Hillside Manor, this is the county housing authority site. They're in process with us now. They've been working for a long time on a master plan to essentially preserve the existing multi-story tower on the site, but to redevelop, reconfigure all of this site to add about 400 more units. Then just south of that, we have what we call the Murphy Site. This is also, this doesn't have as much of a tangible plan yet for redevelopment, but we know that the owners are interested in, in doing something else with that site. And then some of you dealt with some time ago, the McFarland Site here on the southern edge of the central Milwaukee area, bounded by Oak Street, Monroe, 37th. And this is where we granted approval for approximately 230-unit multifamily development there. Providence, Milwaukee occupies another large chunk of this area, and they in fact have their own little redevelopment site at the corner of Llewellyn and 34th. They're looking at some opportunities to install housing there as well. So kind of in the central Milwaukee area in general, we recognize there is a lot of potential for adding a lot of, especially housing units, as well as some other new commercial activity. What else is happening in here? We have some other businesses that are kind of tucked in here, Kimmy's Market at the corner of 32nd and Harrison, and just across the street from them, the Purdy's Car Wash and Detailing. There's also a coffee cart there. We have several businesses that are located at the Harrison Plaza Shopping Center. There's a testing lab, ISC Labs, kind of has frontage on both Harrison and Llewellyn Street. And then we also have the, the city's Public Safety Building kind of anchoring that southeast corner of Harrison and 32nd, as well as a water treatment facility here, kind of between 34th and Railroad and Oak. So there is a lot happening, and that it will be happening in this area over the coming years. And kind of in the larger scheme of things, we also have a couple of important connections that we want to make. We have a designated neighborhood greenway on 29th that it provides our connection from the Spring Water Trail further to the north. And then we have this other neighborhood greenway route on Monroe Street that is providing an important east-west connection across the city. So these, these are routes that are intended to be safe and provide safe ways for pedestrians and bicycles to get, to get around. And with so many more people anticipated to be occupying this area, it's really important for us to have a safe connection of at least these two routes, so people can get through this area, and so the residents in this area can get in and out as well, and other users. So this is the, the kind of zoom in on, on what we're dealing with here. In 2015, the, the city developed a land use and transportation plan for this area, looking at kind of key intersections at those opportunity sites that we talked about, trying to identify some of the connections that, that we want to make there. And this, this kind of connects a little bit as well to several projects that we have in our transportation system plan. I've kind of circled that area here, the central Milwaukee area. There are at least five projects in our TSP that relate to trying to make some of these connections. You can see this, you know, bringing 29th through the Murphy Site, kind of trying to make a connection to the Monroe Neighborhood Greenway. So when, when we are moving forward, in particular with the Hillside Development coming on, and are trying to dial in a little bit more on how can we make some of these, this north-south connection especially, a reality, we start to see that this area here, where, you know, the concept is showing coming through the Murphy Site, crossing Harrison Street, you know, and basically kind of paralleling the railroad tracks. When we really look especially at this area here, we can see that this is not as easy as, as the concept may suggest. You know, trying to do an at-grade crossing, add a, add a, you know, with a railroad there, and so close to a pretty major intersection of Highway 224, we recognize that as these redevelopment projects are beginning to happen, we need to have a better, more specific plan for what is going to be a workable and safe option to get people through here. So with that in mind, we took advantage of a program offered through the Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD. We've worked with this program before. It's their Transportation and Growth Management Program, or TGM. It's basically grants for local jurisdictions to get consultant help to figure out some of these issues. And so we were able to apply for one of those, got it, and we have been working with Alta Planning and Design since then to try to tackle this, this question and figure out, you know, what are, what are some options for getting people safely through this area so that we can be more ready as Hillside redevelops and as especially the Murphy Site begins to redevelop, that we'll have a plan together and we can, we can make these connections as, as the development happens. So what we've done so far in working with Alta, we have talked with, represented. we have talked with representatives from most of the key sites here, the Hillside Site, the Murphy Site with Providence, with the owners of the Harrison Plaza. We've also talked with representatives from the Bike Milwaukee Group. So, that's our own local kind of bike advocacy group that has done a lot to promote cycling in Milwaukee, and we felt would have a really important perspective on this as well. So, we've had those initial conversations. The consultant team has taken a look at all of our plans. They've looked at all the data that we have, done a modal analysis, and they prepared that existing conditions memo that we put into your packet. And they've been working to develop these concept alternatives that we also put as an attachment into your packet. We have started now with those drafts, returning to some of those key stakeholders and talking to them to get their feedback and kind of first responses to these options that are being laid out. And what we'll probably be doing as soon as next week is we'll be launching an online community survey event. It's going to be basically like an ongoing open house where we put those concepts up there. We have some survey questions, and we do some outreach to try to invite people to take a look at that information and give us some feedback. So, that's where we are right now. And what we wanted to do was check in with you and just kind of quickly explain the basics of these different routes that are being looked at right now and get some feedback from you, just like we are trying to do from some of these other stakeholders, to see kind of what you think, if you have concerns, if you think we're missing something at this stage. So, let me just say a few things about these three different options that are shown here. And then, I want to, you know, take a little timeout and ask if any of you have some questions before I move on to just go over the timeline and kind of how we're going to move forward from here. So, the blue option, what's identified as option one in the packet materials that you have, I'll start by saying that all three of these options, since what we're trying to do is connect the southern end, the current southern end of 29th Avenue, with the Monroe Street Route. That's our objective in this exercise, connect 29th to that. The way that the Hillside Site is being proposed to be reconfigured is going to essentially bring 29th Avenue down in this direction, which is why all three of these options being looked at right now are all using what we understand will be this new street. And in particular, the dark blue route, this option one route, basically follows that general concept that was shared in the 2015 Central Milwaukee Plan, which has the route, you know, kind of, again, conceptually, just cutting through the Murphy Site somehow, making this at-grade crossing of Harrison Street, and then continuing along the railroad to connect with Monroe, the Monroe Route. Like I said before, we recognize that there are a couple of drawbacks to this general concept. One of them is, you know, the dotted line is representing that there's not a precise location determined yet for this route. But you can see in the concept, you know, trying to bring a route through the middle of the site would obviously limit some of the redevelopment ideas that the Murphy Site owners might have. And, you know, again, those of you who worked on that Monroe Apartments project where you looked at having the possibility of the bike-ped route come parallel to the railroad tracks, kind of on the side of the site, so getting it out of the way of the development does present other problems as well in terms of you end up with that kind of canyon effect. There's only one way in, one way out, you know, security issues, that kind of thing. And then, you never get away from the issue of having to cross so close to the railroad. And we've shown this route as an option, you know, mostly to acknowledge that it is in that current concept plan. But understand that this idea of crossing so close to the railroad is pretty much a non-starter, I think, with the Union Pacific Railroad and probably ODOT as well for all the complications that it would have. So, moving on to the second option, this kind of golden or orangish route, the idea with it is it would use kind of the newly reestablished Meek Street, come to 32nd Avenue, and then basically bring cyclists across Harrison Street using 32nd Avenue intersection, and then kind of bend to come along Railroad Avenue one way or the other, either following the street itself or using, you know, a path that we might establish behind that newly developed stormwater facility to connect with the Oak Street Route here. Obviously, one big drawback of this is, as you all know, because I'm sure you all at one point or another go through this intersection, this is already a very busy intersection. There's not a lot of space. And, you know, the idea here is to provide a bike route that would be comfortable and safe feeling for riders of all different abilities. And given the limited space and the busyness of that intersection, this would be a very challenging crossing to make. So, with that in mind, kind of the third option that's been developed to date is coming out at Meek Street and either crossing to the east side of 32nd at Meek or coming down along the west side to Llewellyn and crossing over, and then using Llewellyn Street, which is a much lower-traffic street, taking it to 34th and making the crossing of Harrison, you know, farther away from the intersection with 32nd, coming down 34th, and then taking advantage of the city's ownership of this parcel, the water treatment facility. We've looked at this, and there is space to bring a path through and make a connection to the route here. So, I will say that for now, this option three looks to be the most promising in terms of its safety potential and providing a relatively minimal out-of-direction travel for folks to make that connection. So, with that introduction, I guess I'm curious to hear from any of the commissioners if you have questions about or thoughts about any of these routes.
I do.
Go ahead, Commissioner H.
So, the, as much as I love, you know, generally love the idea of, you know, giving bicycles access to main streets, you know, like 32nd, you know, we have some really practical constraints there. And so, you know, I just want to call attention to that this probably is the third route, the third, option C, is probably the one to consider in terms of comfort for, you know, eight to 80 in terms of, you know, cycling traffic. And it's a little out-of-direction, you know, travel. I guess if, you know, if you're going south and you've got to go from 29th over to 34th, you know, I really generally don't like that, and it'd be nice to try and get away from that. But, you know, 32nd just doesn't offer a lot of room to do anything with. So, I think that this is probably the compromise we'll have to go with. And I would just encourage you to really think about how we can tie these routes together, you know, at 34th, you know, in Monroe and Oak Street, and make that work. Because looking at the larger context, you know, we're going to have that Railroad Avenue, the North Clackamas Trail, a multi-use trail that runs out Railroad Avenue. Not quite sure where that's going to tie into this, if it's going to tie in on 40th. And that was one thing I wanted to ask, but since it's a conceptual trail, maybe we're not thinking that far ahead yet. But, you know, this is, you know, this is a really kind of key intersection in not just, you know, in car terms, but in, you know, bicycling and, you know, pedestrian access terms. And so, you know, let's really think about how we make that railroad crossing, you know, at Oak Street and 34th safe and, you know, and make this really, you know, really comfortable. The last thing I was going to add is that I wonder, again, kind of going back to, you know, how problematic 32nd is. You know, is it being constrained and really busy with cars? Just not very comfortable feeling for casual riders. I wonder if there's opportunities to work with the redevelopment site there, is at the Murphy Site, to maybe have the path go through the site, but then turn and cross 32nd at Llewellyn to get over to 34th without having to, you know, use 32nd, you know, to connect from Meek to Llewellyn. That might be the one, you know, kind of question mark I really have is, is that something that we could explore? So, I think I've stood it all out, and yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And before hearing from somebody else, let me just, I'm going to ask you a follow-up question and also clarify one thing that hopefully is evident on the detail sheet of the option three. I think the hope and thinking for this third route is that between Meek and Llewellyn, it would actually be an off-street, you know, almost like a shared ped and bike path so that we're not necessarily dumping bicyclists into a bike lane on 32nd, but rather, it's a separated path that would bring them down to a crossing at Llewellyn. Or conversely, if they cross already at Meek, it would be a separated path, you know, kind of a wider sidewalk on the east side of 32nd there.
Right, and that is spelled out clearly in the materials, and I appreciate that. And I just, I wonder if that'll be comfortable enough? And maybe, you know, you know, 32nd is just a, you know, it's just a really busy, skinny little street with a lot of car traffic. And so, you know, depending on the time of day, it could just, it could still be really intimidating. It has to be really thoughtfully designed, and I see that as a compromise if we couldn't go through and like just cross 32nd, you know, at Llewellyn. But, yeah, I appreciate that we're trying to consider how you separate and protect that traffic on 32nd. And I'd like to see how that would work, especially if there was the possibility of maybe one day extending it along the length of 32nd. But I realize that's probably unrealistic.
Right, okay. And then, the question I was going to ask you was just for some clarification about what you're describing as the North Clackamas Trail. Are you talking about some of this paralleling the railroad and coming kind of from the southeast?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that's the, there's a metro regional trail. It's called the North Clackamas Greenway Trail, and it parallels Railroad Avenue. And so, that was, I forget what the identifier is on the regional trails map. But I've lost my overhead of the area. There we go. Yeah, so anyway, I see planned bikeways, you know, on our map here from Alta that shows the, you know, kind of zoomed out a little bit view, and you can see from a connection from 40th to Railroad Ave as a planned bikeway. And that roughly approximates, it's where the North Clackamas Greenway Trail would be going out to the southeast. But I don't know where it ties in or where it would be conceived to tie in to the rest of the network.
And is your sense that part of Milwaukee's part of that regional trail would actually be that separated kind of multi-use path that we're planning on the north side of Railroad Avenue, kind of between 37th and, I guess, you know, Linwood? I think we've been planning for, that's what that is. Okay, okay.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you for the comments and the clarifications.
Brett, let me ask a question. Is, I remember this discussion about the railroad not being too keen on this idea, but is the dotted blue section, is that in railroad property?
Well, you mean here, kind of where it would cross from 31st?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the idea is, I don't know exactly, but I think we also have some public street right-of-way here, and I'm not 100% sure. I was working with the assumption that we would be trying to build something in either public right-of-way, or it may be that we would have to get some kind of agreement with the railroad to put it in a railroad right-of-way.
It looks to me that that section in Hillside is a pretty good bit away from the railroad. And then, we have that weird street from Harrison down to Oak, that one-way street that, I'm assuming that's that solid blue section from Harrison to Oak, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, you know, option three may be the best thing, but I don't know. I just, option one seems viable to me, just when I look at this.
Well, I will say that it, again, in concept and looking at kind of keeping the straightest line, I guess, especially if maybe when you came down to Meek, you jogged over and kind of came back to the railroad so that you were, again, preserving all different kinds of opportunities for redevelopment of the site, pulling people away from the middle of that site and keeping them along the railroad. I think that this crossing, you know, if you could go over Harrison or under Harrison, I think the railroad would have a lot less problem. But I think in terms of putting-
But it is really the proximity of the railroad where it crosses Harrison.
Yes, it's not so much about being next to the railroad tracks itself because I think they'd probably require, you know, fence separation or something like that. I think that it's probably the, how are you going to deal with traffic by having an at-grade crossing for bikes and pads that close to the tracks?
And the only other thing I would just observe is that intersection at Railroad and Oak is, you know, if we tie the, you know, the bikeway in to the north, the east there, we're going to have to think about that intersection because I think that intersection for people who are not familiar with it is confusing because, you know, Oak Street has, you know, the right-of-way, and, you know, the stop signs on either side. I think that that intersection is going to have to be reconfigured.
Yeah, and that's a good point to make is that almost regardless of which option you choose, I mean, there's a lot still to be figured out about what's going to make this, you know, these connections work safely.
It's not as bad as 32nd and Harrison, but it's got its own unique challenges, I think.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Yeah.
So, I just have some comments, and I want you to kind of think about the future. If Hillside goes in and that doesn't trigger an improvement on 32nd, I don't know what should, but certainly a development at the Murphy property will trigger. And 32nd has its challenge because of the railroad, the traffic that goes through there. You have two lanes that actually divert if you're heading up the hill. I'm directionally challenged, but if you head up the hill, you know, you have to get in the left-hand turn lane or you have to stay straight. You have a veer off, you know, to what you guys call Railroad Avenue, I guess, whatever that name of that real street is. You know, you veer off before Purdy's. It's a challenge. My issue with 34th is, and those of you who don't live in this neighborhood and drive there, that is where the speed van used to sit. Not that I've ever warranted a ticket, but I have received a ticket. And it's because you're coming downhill on that, and you are, if you are paying attention, you are tapping your brake and you're not necessarily looking at the road. And I actually think 34th is the most unsafe crossing compared to the others. And let's not forget that your emergency vehicles are also going to be kicking out of there as well because you have a fire department and the police department, which then makes that intersection a little bit more difficult. And you might not be able to signal there either as well because of the emergency vehicle. So, I understand the problem with, and we've talked about 31st before, you know, what do you do? Do you cut a little section out of the diverter that's already there, you know, for the no train honk, you know, to try to get them across and blah, blah, blah? So, I think if we think about the future, and if we can improve 32nd with the development that may or may not happen, and maybe it will help spur development if we make those improvements to be able to get those bicycles across, I think that's probably your safest bet or I guess the most bang for your dollar.
Okay. Yeah, I'll take those comments, especially the reminders about 34th and the topography with the hill, you know, kind of the downhill coming from the east, and then kind of the entrance-exit for some of the fire trucks coming out here being pretty close. Those are definitely good things to keep in mind and make sure we're accounting for that as part of kind of the analysis of how well this would work. I think some of the initial run towards this on the pro side, you know, or just that it does have really good sightlines. I mean, it's true, there is a hill, but you can see pretty well in either direction what's coming. And then, it has you a little bit farther from this otherwise pretty busy intersection. But you are very right to point out those other couple of factors that we need to consider.
Yeah, and I tell you what, when that bus stops right there, it takes up most of the road. So, people will slow down and then they'll drive kind of around the bus if it's clear on the other side. And if you're crossing that road, you're going to, I mean, you know.
That leads me into kind of what I was going to talk about is with that railroad right there, when the long train comes and everybody gets backed up forever, a lot of cars, and it might not be exactly at this intersection, might be a little bit further down towards railroad, but there's a couple of intersections where people just get out of line and go around because maybe they're going straight instead of going towards Marketplace, and they just go in the opposite lane or just go around cars because, like, either you're sitting two cars, you know, waiting for- you're sitting two cars, you know, waiting for somebody at the front of the line that's waiting to turn left for 10 minutes sometimes, or you just take that, you know, 10 seconds and drive right around in the opposite lane to kind of go around and go through the intersection. So there's a lot of really tricky areas here, and I'd say, kind of sitting and watching what happens, I mean, now is probably not the best time, because this, this, well, I mean, I don't know, but prior to pandemic, when everybody's kind of in a rush to work or rush to whatever, doing their things, when that really gets bogged down from a long train, people just go, they just back up or cut around or, or go in the opposite lane. So I think just paying attention to that train track and what it does, especially, not the short trains, people can kind of live through that, but when it starts, some of those trains take five, 10 minutes, and it, and at some point, a lot of cars just decide, eh? And so I think taking that into consideration when you're right in that area for biking and crossing.
Okay, yeah, thank you, that's a, that's a good point, I mean, yeah, you're kind of talking about what impact the, the crossing and traffic being backed up, people just basically having to sit at this light through multiple cycles, waiting, they back up, and then you're saying like, yeah, we have to remember that sometimes they might be turning around, going around each other, that could really complicate things there.
Down at Oak Street and Monroe, too, correct me if I'm wrong, if you guys know what I'm talking about, but...
Oh, I see.
I, I think it's down there, too, and I know, kind of, there's just a few different kind of intersections where things cross, and, and if somebody's trying to go not in the direction of Milwaukee Marketplace, but in the opposite direction, it can get frustrating to sit and wait for one or two cars in front of you that, so it's just, that's just something, when, when, when drivers especially get frustrated from that long train, then they kind of just cut out, and that's a pretty regular occurrence, especially, I think, prior to, I don't know, I can't speak since pandemic, but...
Right.
But prior to that, and so that's the, the safety as far as when bikers or pedestrians are trying to cross, at the same time as a driver getting, you know, frustrated by getting blocked on.
Yeah, and that, that relates, I guess, to kind of along the lines of what Robert said, too, like, I mean, getting, getting people to this point is, is one thing, and kind of the major focus of this concept plan, but remembering that there's still a lot to solve, especially here, this is an even shorter distance to, to the track, so yeah, that, that's, yeah, appreciate that, yeah. Adam, I think you had a, a comment or question?
Yes, thank you. I have a question in regards to option, route option three. So that Llewellyn Street, is there any road improvements that are, that are gonna be done as well when this is built, because that Llewellyn Street is pretty banged up, pretty bad, so I'm just curious if option three is the route that's chosen, if there's gonna be any improvements or any of the routes, because there are some pretty banged-up streets there, that's question one. My second question is, really along the lines of everybody else, it seems like 32nd has the safest infrastructure already in place, because there is a light and a crosswalk to cross that, and if, if route option three is, does end up being the route, it makes me wonder how many people are gonna just cut through 32nd to avoid having to go through Llewellyn, down 34th all the way around, which, if they're gonna use that anyways, then we might as well, instead of trying to build new infrastructure to make the intersection of Harrison and 34th safe, we already have crosswalk, a stoplight, I mean, most of it's there, if we, as, as Commissioner Hammer mentioned, if there can be some sort of road improvements as well.
Yeah, good, okay, good, good points. To try to address your first question, I'm not sure exactly what improvements are proposed in general for this area. I think if we do get redevelopment of this Providence site at the corner of Llewellyn and 34th, there probably will be at least some half-street improvements that would take care of some of the pavement. And then I think, I think if not, or if that kind of project didn't take care of it, I think it's a fair question to see, you know, we need to coordinate with, you know, our engineering department, and maybe look at the capital improvement plan to see if, if, you know, whatever route is identified, we probably do want to take a look and see where we might want to try to build in some, some planning and get some funding for some surface improvements. It's, it's interesting that on the one hand, my memory of, of looking at these streets, both 34th and Llewellyn, is that, like you said, the pavement is not in great shape, and, and one of those ironies is, it, it provides some built-in traffic calming, right? Because those potholes make it so you can't go that fast, and yet, it can also be dangerous for, for cyclists. So you, you could wonder if you make the streets, you know, really nice, well, you get more cars going that way, but at, at the end of the day, you, I think you do probably need to do a minimal amount of, of pavement improvement to make it safe. And on your, your note about 32nd Avenue and having the infrastructure there already, I think, I think that's a, that's a really good point. I think we'll have to, to think about that a little bit more. I know that the overall idea was trying to, you know, we're trying to link these other facilities, 29th and Monroe, which are, you know, intended to be these, what we're calling neighborhood greenway routes, the idea is that you, you know, you could have families using them, like, I think Joseph used that word, you know, the eight-to-eighty, you know, riders of all different ages and abilities, and, you know, obviously you do on any of these routes, you, you make it to a point where there's a, a little bit of something that feels a little, a little more dicey, but we're generally trying to avoid those, those kinds of situations, and I think that's, that was the first reaction with looking at 32nd, that it's just, we don't have a lot of right-of-way width to work, to work from, to be able to try to, you know, get a separated path, or, or maybe a really wide bike lane, especially as you get to the intersection. And then I think the, the initial thought, too, was just that the intersection itself can feel really busy, and so if you can imagine, you know, maybe a family out, you know, trying to, trying to bike on that, it, it might feel a little more intimidating than we'd like to have there. That said, you, you know, it's a good point that we have a signal, we have, you know, crosswalks, so, so maybe, maybe the suggestion to be taken there is, don't give up too quickly on 32nd, maybe we need to look a little bit more at what would it take to make, make that, you know, feel safe and comfortable. I will note that at the moment, one of the complications with this is that the Kimmy's Market site, you know, it's the only piece on this corner that isn't part of the larger Murphy site, and so when the rest of this property redevelops, you know, if this isn't part of it, it's, you know, it may be a little more difficult to, to get a coherent improvement through here. That's just a complication, it's not necessarily, doesn't make it impossible, it could add some cost to the project, it's not quite as clean as if, you know, as if the whole block was owned by, by the one entity, but I'll take, definitely take the point that we should maybe not give up so easily on 32nd, or at least be able to explain an outline for you and the city council, and anyone looking at these, like, what are the, the real challenges there? So yeah, thank you for that.
Anyone have any other comments for Brett?
Yeah, I have a handful, and thanks for mentioning Kimmy's, and this might be a question maybe more for Director Amon than, than for you, but I guess there's a part of me that's wondering, you know, is, is there an opportunity here to be thinking about the urban renewal area and, and property acquisition for, you know, so that you, you could think about parceling, or kind of better organizing this for, for potential development? So I think that's just kind of a broader comment. Also, kind of in the broader comments to several of the things other commissioners have said, is I think just thinking more about 32nd generally, I think, would be useful. Even just the sidewalk widths on 32nd are so incredibly narrow, and as somebody who lives not far in the area, walking, walking down 32nd, basically at any part of it, with, with two children under the age of six is actually a pretty scary experience, and so I think that wherever we're thinking about work, and to Commissioner Heimer's point about Hillside, I think we should be thinking about how we make 32nd broadly a safer place for bicycles and pedestrians. I think kind of specifically on, on, on this, I think I would agree with kind of the, an earlier statement that kind of option three is like, are compromised, it's like, maybe the most practical and feasible. I do think that the, kind of the option two, and some of what was just kind of discussed around, especially at the intersection of, of 32nd and Harrison, where you have infrastructure could, and, and people are gonna be maybe more generally visible, would be, would be a better thing. But, and maybe just kind of a few other pieces, you know, I noted in the, in Alta's report, in kind of some of the project constraints, there was kind of the, the second-to-last bullet point was about Clackamas County advising against enhanced crossings using rapid flashing beacons within 300 feet of an intersection. I, I want to hone in on the word advise there, because it seems like something like with option three, you know, if you were to put a rapid flashing beacon at Meek and do the crossing at Meek over to kind of the east side, you might then be able to take advantage of existing facilities. When Llewelling redevelops, you get additional facilities in there, so you might be able to make some of those, those crossings, so maybe, you know, maybe having further discussions with the county about their advice versus kind of firm, firm guidance could be something we could think a little bit more creatively about. I think that's kind of, I'd say, maybe generally, and then, you know, others have mentioned, but the, the connection at Oak is tricky, and you probably need a whole consultant team just to solve that little piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, you may be right. Jacob, can I ask you one follow-up question about, about the, the advise part? Are you saying that, so the county's got this, you know, recommendation against, you know, rapid flashing beacons within 300 feet of an intersection, are you suggesting that that means it would be wiser to consider crossing farther away?
I'm sorry, go, go ahead, finish.
No, I, I think, I mean, are you saying like, if, if you're trying to decide between Meek and Llewellyn in terms of where to cross, that you would probably, whether you can get the 300-foot distance at either place or not, and I, I don't have the number in my head, but that it might, you, you'd get farther talking with the county if you pushed the crossing farther away from the intersection, is that what you're, you're saying?
I think I was thinking that, that, yeah, if you were to do kind of rapid flashing beacon at Meek, that puts you further away from Harrison, so you don't have as many of those kind of constraints, and then I was also saying, at least per the memo in front of me, this is the county's advice, right? You don't have to take the county's advice, and we should be thinking about what works best, given kind of the unique context of the conditions that we're trying to solve for.
Agreed, okay, yeah, I understand, okay, right, good to keep that in mind.
And I just want to say, I'm sorry, go ahead, Amy.
Well, I'm, I just want to throw out, anytime that I have the opportunity to push a roundabout or a comprehensive roundabout, I would or do, and I don't, I don't know if that would at all be feasible in this situation, but just the studies and having traveled abroad where roundabouts are very, very common, they decrease traffic, side-impact collisions, and decrease pedestrian casualties or collisions, there's just so much study and data on roundabouts as opposed to intersections, and so I just wanted to float that out there if, for some reason, the 32nd or Harrison was kind of getting in there, and there would be the opportunity to maybe go in that direction, which is, I know, probably dreaming, but I would, would just float that out there.
Fair enough, yeah, thank you.
On 32nd Avenue at Harrison, the east side, crossing on the east side is a lot safer than crossing on the west side, and the reason is, is you got, that side's unsafe, the other side's safe, and the reason is you have a lot more open space on that east side with the big parking lot of the office, you don't have the bus, most people are coming down the hill, want to take a right onto 32nd, very people, very few people are coming down Harrison to take a right up 32nd, and most people do not turn onto that road left towards the cop shop, and, I'm sorry, the public safety building, and the public safety building has a tendency to slow people down anyways, just because of who they are, so that, the, when I cross over at 32nd, I always cross on the east side, and I avoid the west side like the plague, so...
Greg, I...
That might, that might help you as well.
Greg, I was gonna say, I think you actually have to cross on the east side, I think that the sidewalk, that the crosswalk kind of on the, on the west side actually has like a do-not-cross kind of signage up, that might have been a recent change, but I know the last time I was walking down there with my kids to go to the library, I noticed that.
So I, I think, I think what I would, what I would suggest is, yes, you would want beacons at Meek to get people over to the other side of the street anyways, but in, right, instead of thinking of 32nd working like maybe parallel to each other, maybe just working the east side might be the safest route, I mean, a double-lane bicycle thing or whatever, I, I don't know how that kind of stuff works, but...
So are you suggesting...
I'm gonna confirm what Commissioner Sherman said, that the crosswalk on the west side of 32nd is closed.
Okay, so Greg, are you, are you saying that, would, would maybe, that another thing to look at would be bringing a shared path down? Or, or if you're using option two, you're saying, you know, what, maybe option two would be cross at Meek and come all the way down and, and have this crossing happen on the east side?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and it seems like that the west side must be extremely dangerous because they say do not cross there, so that might be, that might be your best bet, is that a little bit of a hybrid there.
Okay.
That you cross over to get over, because I think Meek has a sidewalk there and a bus stop or something there, to get over now as it is anyways, but with the beacon flasher, probably pretty good, and then you could take the east side of 32nd down to cross over.
Okay, I think, I, I get you on the idea of that. I, I think the reality of at least the current right-of-way width that we have here is that we would probably have to eat into this existing parking lot and acquire some land to have enough room for a wider facility here, is probably what would be needed. I know that was a concern when we met with the Harrison Plaza folks, they said, hey, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of room over here, I don't know what you guys are thinking about doing in this stretch, but you, you'd be eating into our, into our site, but, but I, yeah, I think, I think that idea makes a lot of sense, if you are gonna come down 32nd and trying to cross here, maybe finding a way to get people over here sooner would be the thing to do.
So Leila, did you hear Jacob's question about urban renewal?
Yeah, I did, and that's something we can certainly discuss with the community advisory committee once they're formed, just so the commission knows we're starting a process, and actually, I put it out there to folks watching, that we'll be asking for applicants to our community advisory committee to set priorities for the urban renewal district for the next five years, so it's something we can think about, but we also have to weigh it in the context of a number of different projects that, that we have for that plan as well.
So you already, there is already existing set of priorities for urban renewal, okay?
Yeah, yeah, set out in the 20-year plan or the 30-year plan.
Okay. So that was a good discussion, I think, Brett, I, we probably gave you a lot to, to noodle there.
Yeah, yeah, I just, let me, just to close out, a final slide is just kind of where we're going from here, where we're at right now is, you know, we're starting to get this, these options out there, you know, we're talking to you tonight, we're talking to the city council next week, we're following up with some of those key stakeholders to see what they think about, you know, what's their initial read on these things, we'll be launching that open house, that online community survey next week, it'll be live, I think, for several weeks, you know, we're kind of hitting so close to the holiday time that we're probably just gonna, you know, leave it out there for three or four weeks and, and kind of keep, you know, sending emails and, you know, asking you and other people to help us, you know, point folks to, to that. And then what'll happen from there is, you know, we'll take the feedback that we're getting from you and others, we'll, you know, the, the project team will kind of, you know, like you said, noodle over all that and kind of see where we need to dig in a little bit more, and then we're, you know, we'll, we'll come back, I think, to you and the city council probably in March, in early March, to kind of let you know, you know, where things are at and get kind of, you know, some final feedback, and then from that point, I think we'll, we'll be going then on directly to the city council to see if they can come to an agreement about adopting a resolution that would basically adopt the, the plan, and then we'll use it as a guide from there. So just to close out, you know, we'll, we'll probably communicate with you guys again once we launch that open house, and encourage you to point folks to it, that'll be kind of our next step, and then we'll, we'll aim to come back to you in the, maybe, is that early spring, early part of March, to let you know where we're at, so, thank you.
Thank you. So do the commissioners or staff have any other business to discuss or any updates they'd like to offer?
Well, we still have another presentation by Brett to talk about Title 18. We do! Get some more of Brett!
Oh, Title 18, sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Brett.
All right, well, depending on the questions that you have for this one, you know, we'll, we can take what, what time you want, let me share my screen again.
We'll, we'll power through, sorry.
Okay. Okay. All right. So Title 18, our flood hazard regulations. What we're, what we're wanting to do with you tonight is just kind of get on your radar and let you know that we're going to be coming back to you in about a month. On January 12th, right now, we've tentatively got scheduled what will be a recommendation hearing to present to you the, the code amendments that we're putting forward. We're going to ask you to review them and make a recommendation that will be passed on to the city council for their consideration. So January 12th, this is all set up for, for that. And what this is about is about the, the flood hazard areas that we have in the city. Here's an overall map of, of the city. You know, as you know, kind of our downtown fronts right on the Willamette River. So we're right at the mouth of a couple of creeks. We have Johnson Creek coming in from the north and kind of Kellogg Creek and the Mount Scott Creek that come in from the south. These are our two, you know, kind of major tributaries that kind of form the northern and southern boundaries of the city. And so, you know, we don't have a lot of flood area throughout the city, but we certainly do have some designated flood areas. And that's what Title 18 is, is all about. It's, it's regulations to kind of control and try to limit impacts that, that changes to property have on folks both up and downstream. So what we're trying to do in general, we know that flooding happens. You know, the, the Federal Emergency Management Agency or FEMA, you know, has mapped kind of the, the whole country. And in our area, we have maps with, that show designated areas where we expect flooding to happen, whether it's every, you know, kind of 100 years roughly or, you know, bigger events, 500 year events. And these regulations are intended to try to preserve flood storage capacity so that when the flooding happens, you know, kind of we know more or less where to expect it and, and that we've kind of tried to regulate some of the development that happens in those areas to limit losses and damage there. So, you know, obviously our waterways have other functions. You know, we have a whole other set of rules about the, some of the, the riparian wildlife ecological resources. Our natural resource rules handle those. Title 18 is kind of more, almost more mechanical about like the impact of water and water flowing through these, through these areas. And so it's through those rules that we've set up that we're able to participate as a community in the national flood insurance program that, that makes flood insurance affordable for folks in the community. And it's kind of contingent upon us having a, a basic standard that the, the federal government and FEMA approve of. So every so often FEMA is updating their, their rules, you know, and, and that's what they presented us with this time in 2019. I think they, they prepared a, a model ordinance that they're pushing out to communities. The, the current regulations that we have in Title 18 are, are based on more or less an earlier model ordinance. So there aren't really broad changes that we need to make to stay compliant, but we do have to make a few. And I think the last time we, we went through a similar exercise here was about 12 years ago. It was 2008 that we did that. So what we're, what we're going to be bringing forward in January will just be largely, it's going to be administrative changes. So there's some tweaks we have to make to some definitions. You know, we're going to take the opportunity to just kind of better organize our flood code. You know, we're gonna maybe just change the numbering to make it seem a, a little less bulky. We're largely going to be following the more model ordinance that, that has been provided to us by DLCD. And while, while we understand that there are, certainly as part of the, the recent update to the comprehensive plan and looking at some of the policies in the comprehensive plan, we understand that there are some farther reaching goals that the community has and, and more discussions that, that folks want to have about, about kind of ratcheting down a little bit more, especially on some of the flood issues. And given the deadline that we have to remain eligible for the, for the NFIP, for the flood insurance program, you know, we're working with more or less like a March 31st deadline from DLCD. And so understanding the scale of discussion that will probably need to happen if we try to talk about larger policy changes, what we're proposing right now is, you know, basically like the minimum that we need to do to remain eligible, because we obviously have several other code amendment projects happening right now. And then, you know, we're keeping track of some other issues that we, we understand folks are probably going to want to return to when we have time and capacity to have a little bit, you know, we're going to need to do much more public outreach and probably have some, some prolonged discussions about, about some of the changes that, that are expressed in those, those newer comp plan policies. So, so with that in mind, you know, what we're doing is, you know, we're gonna, you know, we're starting this week, we're going to be, you know, starting that public notification process about, about the changes. We'll be coming back to you in January for a recommendation hearing. And then we'll be going into the final part of that process with the city council in February and early March to try to meet that March 31st deadline with, with city council. So, you know, it's not, it's not ideal, you know, given, given the, our knowledge of, of the broader conversations that want to happen, but just in terms of our capacity and the time that we have, we're just trying to kind of keep it, keep it more or less in a box for now and we'll figure to come back. So I guess I'd like to know if, if you guys have any questions about that or if there's, if there's suggestions or thoughts you have about what we can, what we can do when we're, you know, coming back to you in, you know, in more or less a month? What information you might like to see to, to help you feel like you can move forward?
Brett, I, I understand that you're trying to keep this in the box and you got deadlines, but I, you know, when are we going to get back to, you know, the issue of really, you know, defining what are the real, you know, flood planes? Because we know the FEMA data is out of date, inaccurate. And so, I mean, what's going to bring us back to step two, I'll call it?
Well, I guess there, there are kind of two, two ways to think about that. You know, one is, you know, coming back to larger, you know, policy discussions about, do we want to require folks to elevate their structures even higher than we had been before? Do we want to require folks to not just balance cut and fill when they're, when they're dealing with this flood storage capacity, but in fact to compensate even more? To say like, maybe you do 1.5 to one or something like that? That, that's one set of, of questions that we can talk about. The other is this, the accuracy of the maps. And the question about, you know, are we going to get map updates sometime soon? So that at least whatever rules we do have in place, we feel more confident about the areas they're applying to. And that, that, I think before Denny left, we had started some conversations with folks at the federal level about how we could participate in some effort, like what, what would it take? What do we have to do? And I think we need to pick up that thread. I think it may be that there, you know, it's, it is not a fast ship to turn and that we may need to try to see if there's a way we can get on board with some other communities and participate together. We may need to look to see if there's some funding opportunities to help, help do whatever, you know, kind of mapping updates are needed. And then, then there's still going to be that question of our capacity, given the other things that we're trying to, to do. So, so the map question may hinge on doing just enough research to figure out if there are opportunities that we can do something simple to, to kind of help keep going so that, you know, they come back to us sooner. And then that, that other question of when can we have the bigger policy discussion? I guess we'll just have to try to figure out how that fits in with, with the other work that we're doing. I don't know if Laura has any thoughts about that or Leila, either one. But, you know, as you know, we have a, a whole host of other things that we're going to be trying to do. So it just kind of hinges on capacity, I think.
Yeah, and right now, I think if you all remember last time we met, we went over the work plan and we've got the flood plain conversation kind of teed up with the natural resources conversation. And we were thinking about, hopefully, the plan is to get there in 2023 at this point. That may move up depending on how quickly we move through all of the other projects that we have, but that's kind of where it is on the workflow plan right now, unless we hear that we need to change the order of events of what we're taking up when.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand this is not an easy one. I guess my point is before we, from my point of view, I don't think you would want to tackle, you know, mitigation and code changes about elevating, you know, structures or anything like that until you know what the flood plain is. So to me, that's step two, and then the mitigation is step three. But I just, from my understanding, and I have a limited understanding, is that, is that the federal government will accept a locally developed flood plain in lieu of theirs if, because they're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna update theirs. I, I just, I'm just skeptical that we're going to see an update to the FEMA flood plain. I mean, when was it updated? 20 years ago?
50.
Say again?
I think it was, I think it was.
50 years ago? Okay. So.
1970.
Yeah, so I, I just, I understand this is not easy and we want to do all the things that Brett talked about, but I just want to make sure that we don't forget about this and solving this more immediate problem.
Yeah, point taken. Especially if we could identify almost like a sidecar opportunity. If it's something that, if we can just get some information, figure out where we need to push and if there's a, a grant application or something that we can kind of do that doesn't take that much energy, but we get the ball rolling on that. Maybe, maybe there's some opportunities there we can.
Okay, that's, that's, that was just all I wanted to throw out.
So I had a couple of things, if I can jump in.
Sure.
First thing is that I appreciate your policy neutral approach, given the timeline. I'm obviously very excited to get our newly adopted comprehensive plan policies implemented into city code. However, there's big issues, you know, here. And, and the, and it really should go through the comp plan implementation committee process. You know, as Laura described, you know, we're, we're looking out a couple of years at that. And, and I wanted to groan when I heard 2023, don't get me wrong. But one thing to keep in mind here is that right now, BLCD and FEMA are working together on implementing a new model code for the bio that was published a few years ago by the National Marine Fisheries Service over the jeopardy to the salmon heads and, you know, southern resident killer whales and everything that are in that area. So, you know, there's a, the big settlement, you know, that came through with FEMA. It's about the NFP implementation here in Oregon and the impact on salmon and steelhead and lamprey and everything. So there's, there's more changes coming down the line. And a lot of those changes, I've been participating in those, in those, some of the meetings and discussions that DLCD has been hosting. A lot of the ideas that are coming out of that are really consistent with the policies that we just adopted in our comprehensive plan. So, you know, we, we shouldn't necessarily, you know, wait until the federal government and the state get around to producing the model code necessarily. But, you know, we want to keep in mind that those, those might dovetail together and we might get good data coming out from the feds and the state about what regulations are appropriate and will be supported and might even be required at that point to stay in the program that we might not know in advance if we were to jump up and start, you know, doing this earlier. So I just want to caution everybody that, you know, there's, there's other forces and factors at play here that, you know, it might, you know, might make sense to just kind of, you know, hold on for that couple of years and then, you know, see, see where we are then and, and what science is and what the recommendations are. Maybe a really good opportunity in 2023 to do some really good code amendments around flood plans. But, you know, it might, it might be too early if we jump in, you know, much earlier than that. We might end up duplicating all the work.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
And we can take a look at that, Joseph, and try to understand a little bit better how that might play out from a timing wise and what DLCD and FEMA's kind of schedule is looking, I mean, schedule is looking like. I think it's moved around a lot and it's been drug out a lot longer than we originally thought that it was going to be. But just keeping our eyes on that and, and hoping that somehow we'll cross paths at the right time to use what they've been doing to help us help inform kind of our conversations.
I think we all lucked out that they decided not to do the interim code, model code first, because then we'd end up doing this twice anyway. And now we just get to wait a couple more years and we'll get the one code and be done with it. But yeah, it's, it's, it's been a painfully long process for those of us that have been tracking it for a while. And I'd, I'd love to get it in place, but we need to know what the rules are going to be.
Yeah.
Other comments?
I, I shared some comments earlier today with, with Laura and Brett, just via email. I previously worked on flooding issues and flood insurance issues and was just sharing some information, I guess, to share with you all about, I think, the importance of elevation certificates. So Robert, to your kind of question about the accuracy of, of a flood plain map, really the most accurate way to kind of go in is to hire a surveyor to come in and take very precise measurements of your property and compare it to the maps. And, you know, sometimes it shows you're actually on natural higher ground above where a flood would be. Or sometimes it shows that the map might say your property is in, but actually your house is not in and therefore it doesn't matter. This was just kind of a, a really important tool that we were using in some of my previous work. There is an expense to that. You know, it could cost a homeowner between, you know, 750, maybe a thousand dollars. But it's a one-time expense. And was sharing some perspective that it might be worth us thinking about instituting some sort of requirement for a property owner to get an elevation certificate kind of when doing development, such as a renovation or even when a property transacts as part of a sale. Because again, that, that document is, is, once you have it, it's good for the lifetime of that property unless other development were to kind of occur. So just wanted to share that with you all. Happy to take any questions.
So Jacob, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up. I did have, you know, since you sent your message, I did check in with our engineers to find out from them how, how or if they're handling that. And as part of, you know, one of the things that has come out of the, this process of updating, you know, it started with a visit from DLCD last year where they kind of came and take a look, took a look at how we were, you know, what we were doing to implement our flood rules. And, and that kind of prompted the, the more formal development of an actual flood plain development permit that our engineering department handles. And so they've, they've met some of the, the FEMA DLCD requirements by, you know, writing down, you know, kind of creating their standard operating procedures and establishing that more formal permit. And it does appear that when there is development, it is a requirement in fact to, to have an elevation certificate. So that, that, that would address at least that part of, of your question, I think. So. Any other thoughts or questions? If not, we'll, you know, we'll be, again, planning to come back to you on January 12th with, with proposed amendments. So we'll try to explain as best we can in the materials then.
Thank you, Brett.
So, thank you.
Any other presentations? Okay. Okay, so do the commissioners or staff have any other business or updates they'd like to offer? Okay. Commissioners have any other general items for discussion? No?
I, I just want to remind everybody that the City Hall Blue Ribbon Committee Open House is still live online through December 22nd. So when you're done getting your picture and moving your chair right in front of your Christmas tree, you can then get online and make some comments.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder. Okay. Staff, would you like to go over the future meeting forecast?
Yeah, the one thing that I wanted to, you can see from on the agenda that the, obviously we've got the continued waiverly conversation. And Brett was just talking about Title 18 coming up. And then there will be a work session update for the comp plan implementation. What Bureau will be coming back to you. And then one thing I wanted to add was that based on our last conversation on the 24th about the bylaws, it's not noted on the agenda for tonight, but I will be coming back to you on January 12th with those revisions to the bylaws that were discussed. And as a note, we will not be going or not be having the joint meeting with city council on the 19th because I need to have enough time to capture any conversation that we have next time before we go to city council to talk about the bylaws and the updated work plan. So we'll be rescheduling that meeting for, to February 16th. So I hope everybody can put that on their calendars and hope that you all can be. So I hope everybody can put that on their calendars and hope that you all can be at the city council meeting on the February 16th.
So I would like, just to tee up the commissioners to think about who would like to serve as the chair of the planning commission for next year. And January 12th is looking like a busy meeting, but if we can't get to it that night, we can certainly get it to at least the second meeting in January. So give that some thought if you'd like to serve as a chair of the, of the planning commission. I think that's it for the calendar. I hope everyone has a chance to reach out to those who are important to them in the coming weeks, even if it's via Zoom or FaceTime. And we're all hoping for a, a return to normalcy next year so that we can get up close and personal more to those that are important to us. So I hope everyone enjoys the coming weeks in the new circumstances. And since Saturday is the second week of, second Saturday in December, I just have to say, go Navy, beat Army. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Got one from Commissioner Sherman. Thank you. And all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thanks, everyone.
See you in 2021.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Have a good rest of the year. Good to see you.
You too.